Good morning.
Mr. Lindahan, how are you?
Hey, the game is all here.
Take a look at the goodies, so.
I need one.
You coming?
A little last minute homework, Karen.
I took a couple of notes from yesterday in my office and I left the whole notepad on my desk. And I'm trying to remember the questions I had and write them down again. So mad at myself. I printed out the whole thing, too. I was like, ugh.
I have notes everywhere.
I'm like a hand note person, too, so I just.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome, welcome to the joint, SUNY Erie Joint Meeting of the Board of Trustees and Foundation Board this Thursday, April 28th, 2002. I will ask that our Madam Secretary please call row.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Len, my name.
Here.
I am here. Candace Morrison.
Here.
Carrie Phillips.
Here.
Jeff Stone.
Here.
Danise Wilson.
Here.
Travis Colen.
Excuse.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, and at this time, I would like to call this meeting to order. Next on the agenda is, of course, the Joint Meeting of the Board of Trustees and ECC Foundation Board. I'm just, just making sure. As always, I like to get our items of approvals up and going in case we lose someone towards the end, trustee. But at this time, I think we need to have the Foundation Board join the table. So please, join the board. Oh, okay.
Get in my seat.
Hi.
I got one, right there. Good to see you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Jake Gallagher, Wester Automotive Group.
Hi, Jake. Good morning.
I think we can just go around and introduce ourselves for those who you may not know. Kate, I'll start with you, since you're.
Sure. Good morning. I'm Kate Masiello. I am the Secretary to the Board of Trustees and Chair of the SUNY Erie Policy Committee. In my day job, I work at the Community Foundation for Greater Buffalo's Senior District. My apologies.
My name is Len Lindahan. I've been on the board now for five years as a trustee, past Chair of the Board of Trustees. My career was in local government, public service, and enjoy being on the board very much, and thank you for your support.
I'm not a board member.
I just used to go around the table.
I'm Bill Ruder. I was formerly interim president through January 31st and served Erie in a couple of different roles for approximately 20-plus years, and now am transitioning to a sort of a helpful role, whatever Dr. Balkin needs to get me involved in.
I'm Dave Balkin, President of SUNY Erie since February 1st, and yes, I'm keeping Bill very close to my side.
Danise Wilson, Board Chair, been on the board for approximately seven years now, and my day job, I am the Executive Director of Erie Niagara Area Health Education Center.
Hi, Jay, and thanks for everything that Wester does in the community and for the college. My name is Jeff Stone. I'm the Vice Chair of the Board and the Chair of the Budget Audit and Human Resources Committee. I've been on the board for three years, and again, I've enjoyed service during my other time. I'm a partner at Hodgson Russ where I do public finance work.
Good morning. My name is Candace Morrison. I'm the newest board member. This is my second meeting, so right now, I don't have any committee assignments, but still on the learning curve. In my day job, I'm a partner at Curtin Johnson Drew, and I do labor and employment law.
Hi, I'm Carrie Phillips. I've been on the board for, I think, almost three years now. I chair the Strategic Planning and Assessment Committee newly, and also the Technology Committee. I'm an attorney during the day. I'm a newly elected Buffalo City Court Judge.
Thank you. I think now we just turn it over to the Foundation.
We have a couple of individuals that are joining.
Oh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Quite a few.
I'm sorry.
There they are.
I guess we'll start, if you don't mind, I'll just call the names. Carolyn.
Hi, I am Carolyn Storm-Stolben. I am, this is my first year, serving on the SUNY Erie Foundation Board. I'm currently serving on both the Workforce Development and Scholarship Committees. In my day job, I am the Director of Outreach, Ammissions, and Financial Aid for Northland Workforce Training Center, and I also oversee our educational partnerships, including that with SUNY Erie. Thank you. Thank you for having us today.
Absolutely. Chris, if you don't mind.
Christine, would you mind?
Oh, good morning, everyone. Christine Pharoah, I'm new to the SUNY Foundation Board. I sit on the Workforce Development Committee, Scholarship, and Fundraising. And my day job, I am the Commissioner of Juris for Erie County.
Tom.
Everybody, hi. Tom Albrecht, been on the Foundation Board for three years, served on the Workforce Development and Scholarship Committees, and I am CEO and President at Goodwill of Western New York.
Russell.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Russell Heater. This is my first year on the Erie Community College Foundation Board. I sit on the Workforce Development Committee. In my day job, I am Associate Director of Human Resources for the Global Functions for Lindy. Excited to be here.
Jake and Kate.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Jake and Kate. I'm the Chair of the Finance and Audit Committees. As you wait, it is a key part.
Brianna? She might not be available. So.
Gullen is in Florida. He was trying to meet us. I'm surprised that he's not on the phone. Something must have come up that he wasn't able to. Same thing with Paul Lamana. He's traveling. He's in Italy, so he was, he wanted to give his best. He was very sad that he couldn't join. He's like, I don't know if I'm going to be able to, but you wouldn't like the view behind me if I did, so. So thank you very much for taking the time to meet with us. I guess with Mark off, I can kind of take a little bit of the lead. So what we've been working on with the Foundation over the last year is we're trying to get a lot of our fundraising activities moving forward. We actually just onboarded, well, he'll be starting in two weeks, but we just hired a new major gift officer, so we're changing some of the roles within the Foundation, so we're actually going to have that traditional fundraising effort going on where we have somebody who's going to be tested specifically with raising money, growing our scholarships, stewarding our existing donor base, and our scholarship portfolio. We're moving forward with a lot of great events. We just had our advisory breakfast that was here, where we met with our advisory committees, and Dr. Balkin and audience did a wonderful job with that. We had, our keynote speaker was Scott Beeler with Wester. They were our presenting sponsor for the event, so thank you very much. But it was a wonderful event, being able to sit down and actually have people onsite and talk about the future of SUNY Erie, and hear from our business partners who are already engaged with our academic units about what they think and how excited they are to see the energy and the new direction that SUNY Erie is trying to go with everything. On top of that, we have some great, family-friendly events that are meant to kind of elevate us within the community, things like we're doing right out of the fields here, actually, Family Movie Nights, we're going to be doing in July, where we're going to have a pop-up screen and all that kind of stuff. That's going to be a lot of fun. We obviously are doing our golf outing. We're going to be doing our scholarships or our scholarship luncheon in September. We realigned how we do scholarships, so it's better with what the actual enrollment trends are, so that we're keeping them open longer to make sure that more students are going to be able to apply and qualify for scholarships, to make sure that we can give out more of those dollars, and we can kind of spread that out a little bit, instead of having the same small pool of applicants who might already know that they want to go to SUNY Erie. This way, if they're coming a little bit late to the party, they're not going to be completely locked out of getting scholarship dollars from us. So we have some great events. We have amazing new board members. Russell's from Lindy is working on us, working with us on the HVAC program that we're doing right here, where they're doing a cohort. I actually have an email that I'm drafting right now to him, because we're trying to get that on our website, so we can start marketing that we're, they're sponsoring an amazing cohort of 16 students. They're the first dollars in for that, because they want to make sure that students are not taking financial aid. If they want to go on and continue their education after that, they're still able to get their financial aid. It's an amazing program and amazing model that Dr. Balkin and I have been taking out to other community partners to say, if you want to do something like this, this is one way that we're trying to grow in the community. From my office perspective, a lot of what I've been trying to do is help Dr. Balkin make connections in the community towards some workforce partnerships and grow his network in Western New York. From the Foundation's side of it, what we're hoping is these partners coming in will also undercut the cost of the students that are going to be in these programs, and we can grow the scholarships and the financial piece, so that finances are not ever a barrier for students to be able to attend SUNY Erie. So we've had a lot of moving parts, so we're trying to increase our traditional fundraising through events. We're trying to increase. We're trying to increase it by now, onboarding that major gift officer role, and we've been working on some great grant opportunities, and obviously, the RPK study is coming to a close, so that'll be an interesting piece as well, so.
Thank you so much, Chris. I just want to personally thank you and your team, and as well as the Board, for the efforts that you have done in just allowing more students to access scholarships. I can't tell you how excited I was a few months ago when I saw the Facebook ad or whatever that came up directing folks to the scholarship, and it was easy to locate and easy to, the scholarships were easy to apply to. Many of my students who attend SUNY Erie were recipients of these scholarships. So I am just, I'm really thankful for that and thankful for everything that you're doing, all of you are doing, to help the students and our community. I know when you first came aboard, you talked a lot about connection to workforce and how your Board, Mark, and all of you guys were really interested in helping the students of SUNY Erie align with the needs of the workforce and workforce partners, and to see this actually come into fruition is amazing, and I know it's, you know, under your leadership and also the Board's direction, so I want to thank all of you.
Denise, if I can speak real quickly, we, you know, I'm relatively new on the Board, too, so, but I'm thankful to be on it, because honestly, the Foundation and what the scholarships mean, you know, I head up the Workforce Committee, so there's, you heard, a number of key members of this Board are on there, and it's because it's so important. It's because we're trying to bring the students to industry and industry to the students. And I think one of the main things that I've seen since I've come aboard is the willingness of everyone I speak to and everyone who's working in the college to say, yes. What can we do? How are the things? I work with Audia consistently on, all right, how do we get to this spot? How do we get to the yes and put it together? There are programs in welding right now that are being stretched out, that we're trying to work with college members, you know, and faculty to put together extended programs to get those things moving. It's a breath of fresh air to see what's happening. Christopher's a breath of fresh air in how the Foundation is running, and it's been great to see Dr. Balkin come in, so I just wanted to thank you guys for your support, to thank the college for what they're doing for us and the partnership. It goes back to the Board, so.
Absolutely. And just to echo what Jeff said earlier, specifically to the partnership with Wester, we are extremely fortunate to have such a partnership and a linkage into our community with Wester, so we want to thank you for, you know, just continuing to support our students and our college in making this a truly community institution, so thank you.
It goes both ways, and if you listen to, Scott had a speech last week during the meeting, it's about the community. The community is who's taking care of Wester and who's taking care of all of the partners here. We need to make sure that we give back, so we're just thankful to be able to.
It's great to see the article last week. It was terrific.
They took my leadership pose. That's what Scott called. He texted me on Saturday morning, he goes, nice leadership pose. But it was a great, it was a great, and it really illustrates, this is something that didn't exist before, for everyone in the college to say yes and say, all right, how do we get there? How do we put a program like this together? That's what workforce means. How do we do it? How do we do it so that the students have opportunities, so that they go right into industry? The industry then benefits from what happens at the college. It's a direct link, and to see that expanding and, you know, for us to have other programs on there, to see welding and obviously with Russell, you know, we have different programs that are coming aboard. Those are the things that we're excited about. Hopefully, we can continue to put forward.
Absolutely. And then just one other key point, we've mentioned her name a few times, but Dr. Sagai and her instrumental work in building bridges in these types of workforce partnerships, we want to thank you as well, as you represent the college extremely, just forcefully and well, and we appreciate that. And this is for my trustees, this is what we envision the relationship between the Board of Trustees and SUNY Erie and the Foundation Board to be for many years, and to actually see this happening is a breath of fresh air.
I also just want to comment, you know, and thank Jay and Scott Beeler and Wester, because frankly, I don't think we've had a conversation with anybody, you know, in any industry sector where we haven't brought up the model that you guys have helped us implement. And frankly, it's critical that we figure out how to apply that to every industry sector. It's going to be different, you know, there's going to be unique changes and modifications that are required, and it's really going to require that we be flexible, you know, agile, and expedient in being able to respond to the needs of, you know, our partners. And again, you know, for you to basically stand up and point to this as a successful model, one that you expect to be dependent on moving forward, frankly, the current environment and the projected environment for workforce suggests that everybody is going to be taking notice, and, you know, I'm hoping, again, that this relationship just continues to blossom and expand to cover even more titles and opportunities as opposed to strictly maybe mechanic and body repair, you know, there's a breadth of engagement opportunities that I think you're doing a phenomenal job leading us with, so thank you.
I appreciate that, and I know, I know I've got a bunch of people on the screen behind me who are chomping at the bit to get this expanded to other sectors and make sure that we can show what these type of programs can do and this workforce can do. And again, the Foundation being able to put scholarships in the right hands and make sure that we're reaching the right, that's really what it's about. It's about putting the students and making sure that we have those programs that the students can graduate from.
I feel like I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that, like, working with Eric and working with other departments within the college to make sure that we are streaming money in the scholarship piece. I mean, this is really a collaboration. We didn't just decide to start changing the way that we're doing things. We reached out to our partners within the college, which sadly, had not really been done from the Foundation in the past, where they didn't really ask, so should we be closing scholarships in March, which is when we were? When do you actually get applicants? Like, we get applicants in July. Oh, so we're probably not allowing most of the people who are going to be... These were conversations that sadly were just not being had, so, I mean, honestly, it's really the true partnership that we're starting to see, and we're really trying to foster, because there are amazing people that work here at the college, and just actually asking questions and having these open dialogues has enabled us to be able to have this moving forward kind of feeling, so that has been wonderful. So really, it's really the other departments that are really helping us be able to do any of these moves forward, and the incredible people on our Board, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd be remiss without mentioning two things. One is, we talked about foundations, but with Christopher and the Foundation's support, they're the ones that actually applied for the Oshai Grant and leveraged six other foundations, so there's a lot of work. There's a lot of moving parts to get that $280,000, so without the Foundation's efforts, we don't have the RPK study. So personally, I want to thank you, Christopher. And then, do you want to just mention maybe a big initiative that the Foundation's looking to move forward with, you know, over the next year, as far as maybe North Campus or something? Because we always talk about, you know, scholarships, but the Foundation plays a lot of different roles.
Absolutely. So we did engage Wendell for a study to kind of say, what could we possibly be doing here at North for beautification, for better utilization of space? And we are working with Dr. Balkin and some of the local municipal partners to say, what can we do out here to try and make better use of what we have, make it look updated, really make it a destination for students? So we do kind of have that footprint plan of what we could do to kind of upgrade the facilities, put better sporting facilities out here, upgrade, add some buildings, again, beautification of the whole facility. Dr. Balkin has given us a list of basically all of the resources, the buildings, the rooms, the hallways, for naming opportunities, so we can start reaching out to some of the business community, and even just legacy people who have massive ties to SUNY Erie, that would be great to approach and say, you know, we'd love to have your partnership, could we maybe, would you be interested in having an atrium named after you, or having the quad named after your family? Those types of partnerships where we can now bring in additional dollars, whether it be through some sort of capital campaign towards all of that, or, I mean, we had a meeting with the Flickinger family about taking their name off of the Flickinger Athletic Center, where it would still be on the brick where the original piece was, but instead of the big electronic signage, having that be a sponsorship that we can sell, and they were completely amenable to it. And honestly, it was a very entertaining conversation. It was wonderful speaking with Catherine Schweitzer. She's actually with the Baird Foundation. She goes, you know, my father, he would love this idea, because he didn't have blood running through his veins, he had money running through his veins. And the fact that you're trying to do what's best for the students, that's what he would have loved. I mean, it was a great conversation, and sometimes you worry going into that, like, maybe the donor's going to feel offended. She's like, absolutely, if you can sell that and you can get scholarships for those kids, go do it. And these are really fun conversations, because there's so much energy around what SUNY Erie can do. So there's a lot of great opportunity, whether it be that, whether it be some naming rights of other buildings, and finding other creative ways of fundraising and, again, preventing those barriers for education for SUNY Erie. I think there's a lot of great initiatives that are out there. Thank you, Bill. I don't know how I did not circle back to that piece of it at all, but, yep.
So, you know, I'd like to also comment, you know, along those lines, this opportunity for us to help ourselves by identifying naming opportunities is critical. There's a lot of potential there, but I also want to make it clear that our priority is addressing our current fiscal challenge. And, you know, at the end of the day, if we're able to do something with the northernmost part of the North Campus, quite candidly, it's going to be driven by somebody else's money. I mean, our focus has to be addressing our fiscal challenges that, you know, again, aren't tied to whether or not we've got a park space north of, you know, the buildings on North Campus. So love the idea. You know, frankly, I'm a huge advocate of beautifying the campus, and as we'll kind of talk about later a little bit, you know, we did go forward for $13 million of capital to the county, $5 million of which is to help put basically a new face on some of the buildings here at North Campus, which is a top priority for us, basically investing in the current infrastructure. We also asked for $5 million to reset exactly what we're going to be doing in the South Towns area. Further, we asked for $3 million associated with our IT migration, our ERP migration from Workday to Banner. So, you know, I just wanted to keep the context here, I mean, because I'd hate for somebody to walk away and think that our focus is not on addressing our fiscal responsibilities first and foremost, that, again, are our greatest challenge moving forward.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions from either Boards?
I would just add that I think the idea about the timing of the scholarships is really an important one, because as we've looked at the reports from the Foundation, one of the things I've noticed is, geez, there's a lot of money here and that is available for scholarships, and I think that we've often heard, well, you know, it's, they don't match, sometimes the money is so carefully tailored that we don't have an applicant for it, but I think, too, the timing might have entered into it. So anything you can do to free up those dollars and get them into the hands of students, that will ultimately help our financial situation, because the Board's presented questions about, I'm sure we'll be discussing today, you know, are we raising tuition? And what, one of the things that informs that decision is how painful is that decision actually for our students? If we are getting those extra dollars covered by outside sources or a combination of governmental sources, outside scholarship sources and Foundation scholarships, then we may be able to bolster our financial situation, to David's point, without causing undue pain for our students. We'll have a discussion about that, but that Foundation scholarship money is really important in the equation.
Absolutely. From the traditional scholarship perspective, even just in the last couple, less than the last three weeks, we closed over $100,000 of new endowed scholarships, and as we're having these conversations with new individuals coming in that are trying to do that, we're trying to keep the criteria very, very broad for who can actually apply for these scholarships. Some of them have preferred it to be, like, I was talking to Erickson about this earlier, a traditional, a second-year student, and we're trying to explain, well, a second-year student at SUNY Erie does not necessarily mean the same thing to everybody. Somebody who has a track record of having been a first student, okay, and then it can be available in the second, third, beyond year, and our donors have been very amenable and understand, okay, now that you've explained it, yes, it's just somebody that has shown that they are going to stick with it after one year at SUNY Erie. We'll do second, third, fourth-year students, whatever it happens to be, based on a student who's obviously can't be full-time, because they're working two jobs, they've got kids, all that kind of stuff. So our donors are very amenable to kind of changing the way that we're looking at it. We've also steered, previously, $500 was our minimum scholarship. We're trying to steer that higher to be either $750 or $1,000, because with tuition and everything going up, $500 isn't what it used to be. When we, I mean, some of these rules were created 10 years ago, 15, 20 years ago. $500 isn't quite the same, so we want to be, if we're going to be providing a scholarship, we want it to actually be impactful and actually be helpful for these students. So those are some of the things that we're currently looking at and talking about, changing our policy for how much would be required to start a scholarship, and then what our minimum distribution of scholarship would be to make sure it's actually impactful for our students.
Do we have any endowed scholarship dollars that we don't have the ability to work with the donor to maybe reset how the money's going to be applied? Because I'll tell you, I've been at previous colleges and universities where, you know, somebody would say, look, you know, I'm donating $100,000 to somebody who graduates from this high school, and all of a sudden, that high school goes away, the person died, and you can't access the money. You know, you've got to go to the state. It's really a difficult thing to address, so, you know, this idea of trying to keep it as open and flexible as possible, and say, the priority would be this, but if that's not possible, X, Y, or Z, you know?
Yes, for some of them, yeah, we do. We've actually been engaging with some of the departments, because honestly, a lot of them, the main contact that we have has fallen away, they've become entirely, we can't reach out to them at all. So we've worked with departments to say, okay, do you know any of the family members? These people we're a little bit more hands-on with, say Culinary. So Culinary pops to mind, because they've been working with us a lot on this exact thing, for, I think they have a weird number, like a ton of scholarships, and a lot of them, the donors have said, well, Culinary can just kind of, they can take the point, we don't need to be involved. Well, if we want to roll these things together, instead of having a bunch of little piecemeal scholarships, we want one big general scholarship. So you have to get sign-off from all of these donors. So we've been working with them, and they've been outstanding to help us. We've been starting to do that, but there, yeah, there's a large number of them that we have that are sitting out there that we've reached out and we're getting no responses. We're basically creating a list of ones that we're going to send as a batch to the New York State Attorney General to say, we can't contact these individuals, we'd like to roll them into one general endowed scholarship fund. So we have that on our radar. It's tough, it's slow-go, keeping, reaching out and everything, but you have to track that you've actually made that effort to reach out to the donors before you take it to the Attorney General.
Right.
I just want to reiterate and thank everybody from the Foundation for your efforts, because it comes at a very important time, you know, we do have serious fiscal challenges, we are, you know, going to be working hard to meet them, but to have new expansive opportunities for scholarships at the very time when we're trying to get our fiscal house in order improves our viability to the campus and to the community at large. So this is helping us get through this very difficult time, and again, we just are very, very appreciative of your participation and your efforts, and the grants have been crucial to getting us going, so it's great.
Bill had a lot to do with that, too. I appreciate him giving the credit to us, but Bill did a great job.
You were the applicant. I didn't do anything. No, actually, for the Oshai connection, it came through the Foundation. Former Board Member, Tom Baker, and he made the entree for the college to the Oshai Foundation, so it's about relationships.
So those who may not fully appreciate or understand what we're talking about, later today, the RPK Group, which is an educational consulting organization, is going to be releasing a final report that includes their recommendations and findings with respect to what we should probably be thinking about doing as we move forward to better position ourselves for financial success and student success. So everyone's aware, you know, we'll be reaching out immediately to the funding organizations with a letter explaining, hopefully, within an hour of the presentation, the key points that were made. We'll be contacting students, you know, faculty and staff. The press will probably release a press announcement, all to ensure that everyone is getting the same message and it's clear that they can access the press release should they have any questions about it. So I just want you to be aware, the Board should be obviously apprised, and, you know, you'll be copied on everything also in real time.
And to be fair, transparency has been the number one thing that Bill and Dr. Balkin have been pushing on this report, is every bit of information that we can be getting is going to be in this final report, so that it is as transparent and upfront as possible, so.
Absolutely. That is appreciated. Appreciate it. Any other comments, questions? Okay, well, as always, we enjoy these joint meetings, and we thank you very much for either attending virtually or in person, and again, just looking forward to continued relationships and partnerships.
Just one quick thought, sorry Denise, I jumped in. Christopher, are you looking, in terms of how the Board is staffed at the Foundation, are you looking for new Board Members?
We are, yes.
Do you have openings, or do you need help from us on that front?
Well, actually, I think we still have an open seat, which is a liaison seat between the Board of Trustees and our Board, so we do have a seat available through, like, a a partnership. So, I think that our charter says that a member of the Board of Trustees can sit on our board to be able to have that.
That was Susan's seat before.
Correct, yeah, correct. So, that is open. If you have other individuals, we would absolutely love it. Althea and Lenora head up our nominations committee. We're working actually with MNT Bank right now, the new VP who's in charge of their foundation, Don Elek. He's helping us try and identify somebody from MNT. There are strategic sectors that, having this conversation with Mark for board development, there are strategic sectors that are underrepresented on our board. We have, obviously, Lenora, but we don't have several, we don't have attorneys. We need probably one or two financial analysts. We lost that when Tom Baker rolled off to actually manage our finances. So, well, he's, he's great. He obviously can't sit on our board if he's managing our money. Jake and Kate is a CPA, but I'd like to get him some help on the Audit Committee if we can get him some help. So, there are specific pieces that might be kind of knowledge gaps or just a little bit thinner on our board that we would like. So, that's, I know, something that Althea, Lenora, and Mark have had that conversation of how do we staff up these pieces of our board so that we're a little bit more rounded, that we can tackle things that come across. If we need free legal advice, we'd like to be able to go to a board member versus go out to the community type thing.
Do you have a finite number of board seats? Or you mentioned one vacancy, but if you have.
We have several vacancies. I think we have 20. 20 is what our charter is. I think we have 13 sitting members. So, I think we have seven vacancies right now.
There is an attorney at MNT that had been wanting to be on this board. I will send you her name.
Wonderful. That'd be great. Thank you.
I just noticed Mark joined us.
Oh.
So, I want to give Mark a.
Sunglasses.
It's been a tough morning, guys. I've been trying to get in for the last 25 minutes, 30 minutes. So, I apologize for being late.
And I apologize. We have a very solid board. We have a very solid board now, and we are looking to grow it. We've got a very talented group of folks that are very engaged in the college and its efforts. And I have to tell you that working with the, Dr. Balkin has been a joy. His leadership and guidance, not only for the college but also with the foundation, has been excellent. So, it's, it's something I think we're really poised to do some really wonderful things at the college. And as David said, we do have some challenges. We recognize those. But I think the opportunity for us to be a really stable force in, in the, in the, in the community is, is really important to us right now. It's something I think we could take, take a hold of and drive forward with. So, but yeah, we have, we do have some open spots. I think Christopher nailed it when he talked about some of the financial areas that we could use some assistance in as well as legal. And then we do need to engage MNT Bank. We did try to reach out and see if there's some folks. I know we're, we're working closely with them to try to add someone to that, to that group as well. So, but thank you all for participating. Apologize I missed a percentage of it, but I did want to say hi and thank you, and looking forward to the next time we can get together as, as two, two boards.
So, before anyone drops off, I do want to take a moment to introduce our new vice president of HR, Cynthia Buckley. Cynthia joins us from Langston University in Oklahoma. Maybe you could share a little bit about your background, Cynthia, if you wouldn't mind coming.
Yeah.
There's a mic up here.
Yeah, the mic is up there.
In fact, if you want to sit here.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. I'm Cynthia Buckley. I am from Langston University, where I served 25 years. I started there at, in a temporary six-week position in the president's office. I've served in the president's office for 16 and a half years. Left there as the president's chief of staff, worked under three presidents and an interim president. And then I got an opportunity to serve as the director of HR. And then that led to assistant vice president for student and employee services. And that means I was in charge of all aspects of human resources, the business office, where I served as the BRSAR, Title IX officer, disabilities officer at the university, and Title IX coordinator. So, I'm glad to have this opportunity to serve as vice president of human resources, equity, and inclusion for SUNY Erie. Just came from Oklahoma just a few days ago.
You were able to catch the, the snow, I hope.
Yeah, it was so pretty yesterday.
That was for you.
Thanks so much.
For you.
I came in on sun and then it had snow a few days later, so it was great. And so, sort of glad to be here, glad to have this opportunity. I'm finishing my doctorate degree, hopefully this summer, from Oral Roberts University in Higher Education Administration. And so, glad to be able to have this opportunity to serve in a more dynamic way here. I'm from, originally from North Carolina, so it's good to be back to the, on the east side, in east, in the east coast. So, glad to be here, looking for an opportunity to be of assistance and of value of service to this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Very nice to meet you.
Okay.
Great.
Great. Well, thank you again, everyone. Thank you, Mark, for, for joining us.
Sorry.
Don't worry. Don't worry.
It was technical. It was a technical problem. I lost internet connection, so I'm on my cellphone. So, I forgot about that.
He has an IT problem.
I know.
Yeah, exactly.
Nice job, Christopher.
Sorry. I forgot the bike's right here. I wonder if I brought that.
Well, everyone.
Yeah, we all heard you. We all.
Everyone have a great morning, and thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Drive safe.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Chris, I'll attach your names.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it all, you two.
You know, North West State has been, they're very community-oriented. I know MNT is a big one.
Well, I'm glad they have seven available openings. We should be able to make some recommendations that sit through on purpose.
Absolutely. So, during the early part of the meeting, I learned that I may have to leave at about 11:00, 11:15. So, at that time, if we are not done, I'll ask my vice chair to take over the reins for me. We will make sure that we get all of the business and votes done prior to me leaving so that we are not in trouble of the court. Before we move to the consent agenda, I would just like to offer our prayers and thoughts to our fellow trustee Travis and his family as he's having family issues. But I think this is appropriate time to just offer his family prayers and well wishes. Okay. So, for board approval, the first thing I have are the minutes of the March 31st meeting. We'll put those in conjunction with the items received outside of the committee meeting, but we'll need to have, I believe, Dr. Sagai go over items one, two, and three, academic calendar, SUNY Erie Strategic Plan, and AFSC ME, ASME, executive summary, and resolution.
I think Kathy's doing that, actually. No?
It's Kathy.
Oh, okay. Do you want to sit over here?
Sure.
Put a mic.
So, are we going to vote on the minutes? I have a question about that.
Yeah, I'll move the minutes to the meeting.
Because I wasn't, I wasn't at the March 31st meeting, so I don't know that I can vote on the minutes, which means we wouldn't have.
I'll move the appropriate.
Okay. Because Kate wasn't here, Lynn, we can't vote on the.
Oh, we can't vote on the.
Yeah, we'll need Travis to be here. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. The college is asking for the chairman woman and the trustees to approve our revised academic calendar for 2023. We had to present it earlier, back in February, just because of time. But what we did is that we took a little bit, some time to really review it to make sure that it made sense, both being in compliance as well as with area colleges. So, we did review that, and based upon that, we did some revision, and we're asking for the board approval. And it is very time-sensitive. It does impact our enrollment and our Workday processes. So, we're asking more for approval.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we're also asking for approval on an extension of the strategic plan. The strategic plan, you granted an extension in November 2020. At that time, we had plans to have that completed by August of this year. And that work was really unable to take place with the delay in hiring a president, the Middle States self-study, and the high level of upper administration turnover. We would like to request additional time to make sure that the, the plan is going to be effective in the way that the college runs. The previous plan, it was very difficult to, what we've, what we've learned through the Middle States study was that a lot of our constituents were unable to really connect with it and understand the way in which they were to support that plan. So, we want to make sure that we have a much more effective plan that has metrics that are also attainable and aligned with higher education. We do have a timeline that would bring us to the end of August 2023. And this allows for us to build in the ongoing development of a strategic enrollment management plan, also to get a better grasp on our educational effectiveness that we need to address for Middle States. So, that will be built in. Our Middle States report is due September 1st, and therefore, we would begin our major overhaul of the strategic planning after that Middle States report is submitted.
Would the delay create any issues with Middle State as we submit the report?
No, actually, it probably is welcome from their perspective, as we are really taking a very deliberate, intentional effort to make sure that we don't find ourselves in the same predicament. Because we found ourselves, this is probably our third time in this situation. And so, I think they would probably appreciate the fact that we're taking our time and being very intentional and very strategic about what we want to do and how we want to accomplish that. I think as a college, we had documented, meaning we had information, but our application did not meet that. So, we could not evidence this. So, we really want to be really careful about how we want to do that.
Nadia and David, you both support this idea?
Yes.
So, my only concern regarding another extension is the gap in between what we said we were going to do and the August of 2023. So, this is approximately a little over a year. So, I'm wondering if there is not necessarily a strategic plan, you know, we don't have to call it that, but as, I guess, as plainly as I can say, what is the plan for the college during that gap of time, that we can have, you know, something tangible in our hand that we can read and measure. As the board knows, we will have in February a review, a self-study, and we will have to ask ourselves these questions. Are we aware of this? Are we aware, do we have this information and things like that? And I think to have a full year, another year, without any type of roadmap, even if it's just for the gap.
So, to that point, and, you know, we discussed this with Carrie and the team. And what we're recognizing is that with the financial challenge we have and the resource actions we're in the process of taking, we have to make sure we understand the impact of those fully before we step back and say we can strategically implement anything. Along those lines, I think we've made it clear that we also have an IT infrastructure challenge that we have to address. You know, it's, it's critical that we have the right infrastructure and the right enablement in place for us to be able to conduct the business we need. So, you know, I fully appreciate your point, and I agree with you. And, you know, frankly, the existing SUNY plan, in effect, just would continue as far as, you know, how we effectively work to engage the local community. I will tell you, I'd be more than happy to document the strategy that we're taking with respect to growing that community and game, engagement by targeting specific industry sector in priority order to help grow our collaboration and our impact in the region. But again, you know, whether or not that represents a comprehensive, detailed plan, you know, what we're hoping to be able to deliver is proof points in August of 2023 that show that it's not just, you know, pie in the sky, but we've got demonstrated, you know, validated approaches to having a successful and, you know, fully implementable strategy.
What we're requesting is an extension of the current plan. So, we will be using the existing metrics and working towards those metrics, but also documenting the, the, I want to say, kind of, there's, they're very, they're, they're unattainable. They have not been attained in the last five to six years we've been using it. If you looked at all the report cards, we have not met those metrics. So, we would like to take this time to really evaluate and assess what those metrics should be defined as while continuing to work on the plan that we've been, we will continue reporting from the plan that we have in place now.
And I think that's the report that we'll be able to present at appropriate time to the board, so that you could really see in real time what is the steps that we're taking and how that's impacting our enrollment, persistent retention, and completion rate, right? And the overall fiscal responsibility of the college. So, I think we will be able to demonstrate and be able to provide the board with reports as to the steps that we're taking.
And also, to be clear, you know, when Kathy was talking about the metrics that we haven't been able to achieve, obviously, part of it is stepping back, assessing why we're not able to achieve those metrics, ensuring that, you know, they're either refined or, you know, whatever infrastructure is required is put in place. But, you know, that work needs to be done, and it's not something that we want to do quickly. We want to ensure, again, that we have the right resources in place in order to be able to accomplish what we're going to be proposing.
Well, it was important, I think, for the board members to have the new president be a significant player in the development of a new strategic plan. That we have talked about a number of times. And your, your point is well-taken about the transition, senior leadership, big changeover, a delayed, even a failed presidential search that we ultimately wound up very successfully. But here we are, and really, David, you've been on the job since late February. So, I want you to have an opportunity to have, you know, your team in place, your thinking in place. You've already identified a lot of goals. And I do think Denise is right, that we will have to maybe do a little better job in this year together, figuring out, you know, what are your top several goals, your next goals, so that when February comes, we can say, all right, where are we with respect to this? Where did that go? So, yes, we'll look at the old plan. But I would think that the old plan is, I'm really almost more interested in what David's plan is here in year one, as he assembles his team and his program and his objectives. And yes, the old plan is of interest, but that was, given what's happened at the college and in the economy and with the pandemic, it almost seems like ancient history. So, we want a plan that recognizes today's reality and is fully congruent with David's goals.
I think what you'll see this afternoon from our RPK study, that will impact greatly in the direction.
Absolutely.
So, I think we will do that in real time. And that's what I meant earlier, that a lot of the stuff that we'll be talking or reporting will have to be in real time. You cannot just look into the history, but what are we doing now immediately? And then how is that going to impact our future self?
There's a lot of moving parts, but I do think it can come together in a pretty comprehensive way by August of 2023. You have a real roadmap going forward that takes into account reality, what's going on physically with the campus, you know, the RPK's report, everything, David's views. So, we're not positioned to do that right now. So, this is obviously something I think we need to do.
And the key part would be to, the ability to meet the metrics, isn't that, isn't that really the, the pattern?
So, regard.
Does it make sense?
I'm sorry.
Does it make sense for us to reach out to Middle States to let them know this is our plan? Or has that already been done? You're just, so that they're aware that this is the reasoning behind our delay?
I've been in constant communication with Terrence, PVR VP at Middle States, and he's been giving us guidance along the way.
And I'm very much in support of that.
I'm just wondering if I can simplify that, some kind of memo to them, or some, you know, some effective way of saying, you know, what are the board's action today? Just that resolution with a letter explaining the reasoning behind it.
Absolutely.
Makes sense. Just on record.
Okay. So, I think what, I think what I'm asking for, and I agree with everyone, everyone's comments, I agree with the extension. I have no problem with that. I think what I'm asking for, you, you, you kind of said it, David's plan. So, right now, there are a lot of moving parts. There are a lot of things happening right now, today, and a lot of things that will be happening very soon in the future, be it as a result from the RPK report, as a result from, you know, our budgetary concerns, our, everything. And so, I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can piece that together so we can see, as trustees, we can see what, what's happening, right? What, what's happening with South? I saw the document that went out. I saw the document that went out to students at South Campus to inform them of the transition and the realignment moves. Okay, how does, how many of my fellow trustees know what's going on? Do you know the difference between deactivation and discontinued? Do you know the difference between, you know, that students will be allowed to register, new students would be, what students would be allowed to register for next semester and what students would not? Those type of, that type of information, I believe, is pertinent to the board, because, again, as you all will have people that are, you know, looking for answers, your constituency and what have you, we should have a good idea of what's going on, the steps of this. Not the intricate details, but okay, we're announcing that, I don't know, I don't, we're announcing we're deactivation in March. We are taking the steps to do the, excuse me, the retirement incentives by August. We are doing, like, that's actually what I'm looking for.
So, if I might comment, you're absolutely correct. And, you know, I'll be the first to admit that our communications hasn't been as clean and as direct as I'd like. And to that end, thanks in part to Chris Muzalowski and the foundation, we've actually hired Tri-Sale Strategies to help us ensure that we've identified all the constituents, including the board members, to be able to communicate cleanly and crisply exactly what our strategy is moving forward, especially with respect to any actions that RPK group might identify. And actually, a gentleman by the name of Adam Corleas started with us on this past Monday, and he's also helping us with the communication strategy that will resolve whatever is issued in the report from the RPK group today.
Perfect. Okay. Executive summary and resolution, ASME, is that, is number three on the approval?
Yes, that's Kathy.
Kathy?
No, I'm kidding.
Did you see that face? I was like, what?
So, ASME is our blue collar union. We are joint employers with Erie County, along with ECMC and the library, as far as that agreement. So, there are four unions at the college, two are countywide unions, ASME and CSAA, and two are specific to the college, that's the administrators and the faculty federation. For the countywide unions, ASME and CSAA, the county is the lead negotiator. We are at the table, but the county really is the lead negotiator. Their contract expired December 31st of '21. The county and its co-employers entered into negotiations, and the county reached a tentative agreement. That tentative agreement went to the Erie County Legislature in April and was approved at the legislature, so the tentative agreement has been approved. There's a document, I think, starting on, like, page 22 through, like, 38 or 39, that lists the 17 areas within the collective bargaining agreement that were negotiated, almost like individual MOUs. Those will be incorporated into a actual document, actual contract. There are some key provisions, but through the efforts of Dr. Balkin, any financial impact in 2022, the college has basically been given a pass as far as the impact. We've basically been carved out of that agreement, so there's a $2 per hour increase in wages retroactive to January 1st of 2022. That increase will not be for any of the college employees, which is significant, meaning the budget that's in place right now, we don't have to account for. There's only one provision in the contract that has an additional cost to us right now, and that is they've increased the health insurance waiver for both single and family members. We believe we'll probably see about a $40,000 hit for our current fiscal year, that's not been budgeted, but in the future years, we actually think we'll see savings from that because we've gotten many inquiries from existing members that currently are getting family health insurance that's costing the college $25,000 to $26,000, and we'll be able to pay a waiver at $6,000. So, we'll have significant incremental savings moving forward. The contract, I think it's page 38, it's agreement number 17, specifies that prior to the end of the current county year 2022, the college will enter into discussions with ASME as far as the impact of future, any rate increases, any percent increases, anything of that nature. Again, we've been carved out for this year, and we have to go back to the table before the end of 2022 to enter into further discussions on the contracts. It's a, I believe, a very fair contract. The county's certainly in a different fiscal position than the college, so to allow us to carve out those financial impacts out is very good. There is a recognition of another holiday, Juneteenth, and so we will follow that. There's no incremental costs, it's just lost productivity for that one day. There's an increase in shift differential, that's for second and third shift employees. So, there are some things within it, but there's a lot of just regular collective bargaining items as far as leave for members and things of that nature. So, I think it's a very favorable contract for our employees and for the college.
Can I just say?
So, the shift differential, sorry.
Just real quick, does it carve out, mean that our employees won't get the raise, or does the county will pay for it?
Nope. Our employees will not get the raise. And Dr. Balkin has worked very hard to work with the union and work with the county director of labor relations, Josh Pennell, to give our employees an opportunity to bump into open positions at Erie County. So, that's something that's actually built into the contract as well. So, it's, we're on our own, we have to pay for any raises, anything in the contract that is not, nothing that's going to come from the county.
Okay. I see the point.
It's just wanted to clarify that similarly, the shift differential won't affect us?
Correct.
Because that's a way to issue.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, other question. So, the actual cost of health insurance, we're talking about increasing the payment for single, you know, waiver for single and family coverage, what exactly do we, does it cost us for that? The waiver is not the same as the actual cost, right?
No, no. So, the waiver, if you look on the bottom of page 19, the waiver will be $500 per month for family memberships, so that will cost the college $6,000 per year. We are currently paying just over $25,000 for family coverage for an employer.
I think that's helpful to include in this information, so people understand that this is really saving us money. I mean, it's there, but it's not a dollar-for-dollar waiver, is what.
Oh, no, it's.
Everybody wants to, I want to make sure that everybody understands.
And this is not, there are certain items that you can go back in time as far as health insurance. This is not a event that we can go back, we've had employees reach out to us and ask us, can I go back to January 1st and get the waiver? No, they can't. So, we have a sign up for health insurance at the end of the year before the start of the next calendar year, so we've gotten many, many inquiries. So, that's why I said we're estimating at least about $100,000, close to $100,000 savings on health insurance as people migrate from currently paid family and single health insurance to the waiver moving forward.
And I want a last question. The agreed upon number eight on page 29 is talking about the normal working hours for full-time employees are 40 hours a week. Do we keep time sheets to document that employees are working 40 hours a week, and is there intention to do so beyond?
We have at the, for maintenance, we have a time clock. I'm not sure what public safety does too.
It's the same, everybody logs into workday and enters.
There is.
Yes, a mechanism in.
Data to support.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And that shift going from five, eight-hour days to four, 10-hour days, that's at management's, you know, prerogative. And that works for us at, in some places, and actually could cut down on the shift differential because shift differential starts after the eight hours for the second and third shifts. And public safety has a lot. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, the $2 differential could, in my mind, create a very strong incentive for ECC employees to wish to transfer to other county positions, right? That's a concern.
No, not a concern.
No? Okay. Are we going to have a mass exodus of our people?
No.
No. In fact, you know, I've been working with the president of ASME specifically on specific opportunities that have been posted at the Erie County Library, ECMC in the county, and frankly, the moves aren't happening like we'd like them to, for whatever reason, despite the fact that they have the potential of creating, you know, making more money per hour, the senior people are not jumping for some reason.
So, you're more concerned about not having an exodus?
Exactly. And that's exactly why we put it in place, to try to incentivize people to hopefully move, the more senior, the more expensive people.
It's a little surprising that they're not moving. It's a pretty significant difference in pay.
Well, I'll be frank, you know, one of the concerns we have is that, you know, if that's an indicator of how people are going to receive the retirement incentives, the college will have a serious challenge on its hands moving forward.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yes, that is. Kathy, you have anything to add on that?
No.
No, okay.
So, may I have a motion to approve items one, two, and three?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Items are moved. For board information, we have the SUNY Form 5 deactivate South programs, we have the LMHF, excuse me, LMHF Financial ECC March and LMHF Financials ECC January through March 2022. Is there any, any conversation, questions? Dr. Balkin, would you like to elaborate on any of these? I think Dr. Sagai wants to.
Okay. Have I added?
Okay. So, in terms of our program deactivation, this is going through sort of our vision of how do we right-size our college appropriately, and how do we do this as efficient as possible? So, on your document, you'll see we have 15 programs that were at South, but also at our city and North and on online. Those are being transferred to either City or North, and leaving those students to be taught out. We're not admitting, to your point, Chairwoman earlier, we're not admitting new students for the fall, so we are going to teach those students. There are about 500-plus students there, so we appropriately created a course offering so that, to ensure that those students will have all the courses that they need to stay on track to be able to graduate from those programs. So, that's what we're doing, and we submitted this to State Ed for them to approve our deactivation of those programs at the South Campus, but those programs are existing at the other campuses of the college.
And again, if you look at the LMHF forms on page 44 and 45, you can see that the net income for January through March is $608,675 positive, and for March, it was $165,326. So, shape on that front.
And while it's initially almost shocking to see on the list things like English, we have to focus on the fact that we're relocating these programs, not eliminating them from the entire college, right?
Right.
Yeah. And to that point, you know, one of the reasons that we hired this PR firm, Tri-Sale Strategies, is to make sure that as any actions are communicated, a comprehensive explanation of it is provided, because oftentimes, what you end up seeing in the press or passed by word of mouth or pieces of information and taken out of context, it really misrepresents what we're trying to accomplish.
SUNY are cutting English, you know?
Exactly.
Right. Okay.
And not only are they available at other campuses, but some of these programs, as you see, are also available online.
Actually, most.
Yeah. So, I want to take this moment just to highlight Dr. Balkin and Dr. Sagai and their team's approach to ensuring that every student that we have enrolled now will be able to successfully complete the program that they signed up for, be it, and some even at South, they'll still be able to continue their studies there. So, the team has really, and I don't want to, you guys can jump in, I just want the board to know, that the team has really looked at literally each student, that this may be impacted individually, and begin to case manage them to lessen any impact that they, any negative impact that may happen. So, I know it was a lot of work, probably a lot of late nights, and, but the students have been secured.
If I could comment, you know, I personally want to thank Adia and Kathy Koleszal, who really put in Herculean efforts to make this happen. And, you know, the evaluation of individual student schedules was done literally for every student at the South Campus, and they worked closely with the faculty and the chairs at the North and City campuses to ensure that the courses that were offered and the number of sections that were offered were appropriate. Ultimately, the faculty and the chairs at the City and North Campus were the ones who defined when those classes would be offered. So, again, it was a great collaborative effort, and, you know, nothing's perfect, there's always going to be some individuals who might have a challenge, but again, we're committed to working with them to ensure that we're satisfying our DLE requirement that they do get fully taught out.
This will tie to the RPK.
Absolutely. Absolutely. But I think it's also important to point out that the work that was done with the faculty and the department chairs, and then the other piece, I think, Chairwoman, you were part of the three-day guided pathway sort of seminar that we participated, and so, very early as we were doing this process with our students, we have a huge opportunity to really look at our advisement model, because what we found a lot was that our students were off track, and so, we are offering courses that typically you may not need to if students perhaps were on track appropriately. Now, our students do have the ability to register on their own without the support of our faculty or staff, so they could do that. So, what we have to do as a college is really revisit our model of advisement, and using the guided pathway will help us to do that. So, it's not just a South Campus issue, it's a college-wide issue in how we can make sure that our students are being advised appropriately, staying on track, so they get to the point of completing their program that we're offering as a college. So, we learned a lot, it's a work in progress, and as Dr. Balkin said, without the faculty being part of this whole process, we wouldn't get to where we are, and again, there's a continued work that needs to be done.
I also want to highlight, it being that the RPK group will be releasing its final report this afternoon, obviously, the timing of that did not align with when we had to put a stake in the ground and say, this is what's going to be offered in the fall. So, there's a possibility that, you know, there's a mismatch with respect to what their recommendations are and when they might be able to be implemented. But, you know, again, the primary message that we want to convey to students and faculty is that we are committed to teaching out anyone who does enroll and is actively enrolled in the college.
Thank you.
Can I ask just one question? When does enrollment begin for the fall semester? Is that already underway?
Oh, absolutely.
It is underway? Okay. And have you, have you been tracking the impact of these closes at South Campus on North Campus?
Absolutely. So, Eric, our VP, and with the Director of Admission, they've been looking at those students who selected. Now, remember, our students are selecting home campus, right? So, we just needed to redirect them and explain to them that you want to be in the business program, we're offering the business program at North City and online. Now, we do have course offering at South that a new student could potentially take it, right? So, we're just changing the home campus, and so, reeducating our faculty and staff about that, we're a one-college kind of approach, that's a big one, and then really telling students that really if courses are being offered, you could take it, but your home campus cannot be South because those programs are not housed there as their home campus.
Nadia, can you generally describe the reaction from the students as you've tried to redirect them? How's it been?
It's been challenging. I think it's a culture shift for us, but I think part of it is that as a college faculty and staff, we have to talk about the same messaging, and how do we do that? So, that's what Dr. Balkin is talking about, is that how do we have this messaging that goes out, right, and it's not driven by the media or just not factual information, right? So, how do we do that to ensure that our faculty and staff are the same in terms of how we want to impact students, and then our messaging to students? Students should definitely be concerned, right? It's just rightfully so. But what we want to make sure is that we're one college, we're here, we're not closing for business, but how do we send that messaging to students and where they are? but how do we send that messaging to students and where they are? The other thing I want to point out is that our students, in part, I think, because of COVID, they've been taking their courses very diverse in a way, right? So we can't just identify and say, one student, they just want to do online. Now, clearly, there are some students who just want to do online. But our students are very diverse in the way they are taking their courses, right? Convenient matter and how they want to do that. So I think we're in line. I think the question becomes, I have to be very honest, it's really our faculty and staff, how do we want this messaging to go out? And students will respond to it. But if we are not on the same page and if we have a very negative perspective about it, clearly, our students in the community will have that type of perspective as well. So we have the power to change the story and we have the power to serve the students. But that has to be a collaborative effort for the entire college.
And when you say there are challenges, is it concerns from the students about finishing a course of study that they've enrolled in?
But again, it's lack of understanding, right? So the communication hasn't been clear enough so that they understand that issue is a non-issue. And it's exactly to the point of why this PR organization was hired, to ensure that in every communication, we have not just, you know, good communications, but a strategy where it's rolled out and reinforced and managed effectively. You know, I will tell you, you know, anecdotally, I was at the South Campus yesterday for three hours. They had a open house for students to learn about the programs and stuff. And, you know, although, you know, it wasn't terrifically well-attended, you know, I did have an opportunity to spend some time with some of our current students who serve in different capacities. And again, anecdotally, they basically shared that there's really not that many people on campus anymore. You know, a lot of the people at South, for whatever reason, and, you know, the explanation I always provided was still concerns over COVID. A lot of students are online and they're trying to maximize the use of online opportunities. Again, it's probably not unique to South. But, you know, walking around that campus, you know, I invite you anytime during the week, go down and experience how crowded it is. It's not a well-occupied facility, you know, it's well-underutilized.
Yes, and my question, and I appreciate that explanation. It's sort of segues to the question, which is there are concerns about finishing the course and then ancillary concerns about now having to move to North Campus. For example, if I live in the far south towns and I have to now drive all the way up to North Campus to, you know, do my studies, are you addressing those concerns?
Absolutely, so for those students who are active and roll in the college, based off what we did in terms of looking at the academic requirement, all those courses are being offered. So there's no compromise there. We're not pushing students and saying, you know, Business 100, it's not going to be offered here, you need it, but you got to go to North. We cannot do that. So number one, ethically, we cannot do that. Compliance-wise, we cannot do that. But as a college, we need to make sure we serve the students appropriately. They came into the South Campus as their home campus, we have to offer that. Now, that may vary in terms of how many students will be in that particular course, you know, after enrollment stops, but we have to offer that. The question becomes for brand-new students. So what we did with those new students that applied and their home campus was at South, we contacted those individuals and talked to them and said, this cannot be your home campus. They may be our courses that may be offered there, but we want you to know that you cannot, possibly cannot finish your entire program of study there. So we contacted those individually under Eric's leadership to make sure that there was no misunderstanding there. But for the continued students who are actively, I want to make that very clear because there's a difference of students who are previous students at the college and home campus was South. That's not the group that we looked at. We looked at the current students, so all of those students, we have to do that. And we, I mean, it's not even a question for all of us that we want to make sure that those students get their coursework and be done.
Yeah, I think one message that Adiam just shared, that we really need to figure out how best to reinforce, is the fact that even if a program is deactivated at South and is being hubbed at North or City, the fact is, courses may still be taught at South depending on the demand. And what we're effectively looking to do is to have a single program chair, rather than three program chairs, you know, one at each campus, a single program chair make the call on how to load those sections.
Not getting too down into the weeds about this, but as the new students were redirected, do you have a sense of what percentage said, well, that changes my mind, I'm not coming to SUNY Erie?
I'm not sure if Eric could speak to that, but...
No, it's a great question.
Eric, if you could. Thank you.
I don't have those specifics, but I can look to see anecdotally if we get any responses from it. Those letters went out and were received after the spring break. So I'll see if there's any feedback that was received from those messages.
Just curious, you know, it doesn't have to be exact, but how does that affect enrollment?
And I'll provide a greater update with regards to enrollment, what the advisement's report to, and what we're seeing between the campuses.
I just want to also add, thank you, I just want to also add, just a, I mean, I don't want to assume that everyone understands what it means when you say their home campus. So home, correct me if I'm wrong, or I should just let you explain. How about that?
Absolutely, I can take that. So part of what we did as a college, right, in our State Ed, we are looked at three campuses in terms of operating. Middle State were considered as one college. So for us to make us to code it as one college through State Ed, we have to do an application process, which will take a little bit of time to do that. And as we're moving forward, and that's part of why our strategic plan is important to think through, how do we want to do that? So that's the difference. So what happens in the application process? A new student comes in, and then which campus would you like to take your program? And then the student would check in. So that's how those students are coded and that's how we do our data and so forth. So that's what we have right now. So when we talk to our new students, what we want to do is say, well, we have the business program at South and City and so forth, so you could take your courses, but your home campus is not there. So we're not technically obligated to offer the entire program, course offering at that if that's not, you know, coded as their home campus. So it's a matter of us creating that process and really getting ourselves to that one college vision. And I think that's where we're going. But in order to do that, it's going to take some time for us to get there. So that's the difference between how we are identified by State Ed versus Middle State.
From a student perspective, I know a few of the students that I work with, they choose North Campus as their home campus because it's prettier, it's better. It looks more like a campus. And I don't, I don't understand the mentality of it. Well, compare, hey, let's just face it. But they will take their classes, distance learning or at City Campus, because my, the students I come from are from like the city area. So it, it's important, I think, for us now to use this time to move to that one college approach, to eliminate some of this complexity. To me, that's not really necessary.
And I think the other thing to point out, I just want to clarify about this too. Before me and probably all of Dr. Balkan and Bill perhaps, the college also offer program based on campuses. So they are, we do have right now nine programs that are unique to South Campus. In other words, we do not have that program offer at City or North. So our Autotech is one example that we're working through. So part of what the college did is also that. So that idea of three campuses, and I think there's a history behind why that was the case, but also our programming is not consistent currently as we see it in that way of one college. So that's another area we have to work through. So that's another piece. But there are nine programs that are unique to South. So those programs, and it would take between twelve to eighteen months for us to get approved in terms of moving those programs, either at City or North or online. And it'll take a lot in terms of the process to do that.
And again, you know, there's also the possibility that, a strong possibility that we're obviously maintaining a South Towns presence and will be looking to integrate some of those programs potentially with community partners or industry partners who have assets that can be shared. So part of our strategy and something that you'll see more, you know, as we talk about the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three strategy presentation, is our desire to be, again, more fully integrated with the community and leverage assets that are readily available. So rather than, for example, you know, buy four more bays, you know, of a garage, work with the twenty-eight people who are in the South Towns who currently have garages that close at five o'clock and resources that could serve as adjuncts. You know, we just have to get a little bit more creative and, again, working with unions, but, you know, recognizing that we have to be much more efficient in our asset utilization.
So a model that we have somewhat similar to what Dr. Balkan is talking about is our Northland site, right? Our Northland is an extension site of the college. We have, only one of the courses has to be taught at North, but the entire program is being offered at Northland, right? So the equipment, the space is there, our students are there, our faculty are there, the services are there. Clearly, those students could also benefit from the type of service that we have at the college as well. But that's an extension site opportunity. And that's what we're doing with Autotech as well, is to do an extension site so that we are offering the curriculum, we are offering our faculty and our students, but the equipment and the space is really done by the particular partnerships that we have. So that's a good example that we have currently, and very successful, I have to say, that we could mimic with other industry partners.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve items one, two, and three?
What are they for information?
Information.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. They're for information. We went into such great detail. Okay, moving on to committee briefings, curriculum, student success, and diversity. I think we had a very robust meeting, so much so that we decided to extend the meeting time to an hour and a half. Dr. Sagai presented us with a good plan as we were still trying to work out the format of this meeting and discuss things like, actually, we're going to break it down, the committee into, the committee discussions into academic, non-academic, and support services and things that will align, that will align under each of those services. We're also working on obtaining a list of programs in the college, be it opportunity programs or other, I don't know, social-type programs. So we're working on generating that list and then from there, looking at some data from that list, like what programs are most impactful or, you know, what have you. And I'm sure that will eventually, probably already, is filling into the budget discussions as far as the programs. And that's what we'll be doing going forward. We had a great discussion about guided pathways as Dr. Sagai spoke about. I'll mention a little bit more in my chair report. And then lastly, we went into detail about the YES program, which is a Erie County program that was assigned to us approximately twenty-nine years ago. And we, Dean Petrina Hill-Cheatham discussed a lot more about that program. I would actually like to move the item that is under Old Business for board's approval, Agreement of the IBS Contract Renewal 2022 Executive Summary, to this curriculum and student success agenda item for approval. And we spoke a little bit about this in the prior meeting and there was some homework that had to be done for this item. We did discuss it further at the curriculum, student success, and at this time, I would like a motion to approve the agreement.
Just checking, is this the contract, I think it is, where we've had the solid hundred ninety thousand for twenty years?
So our approach effectively is to recognize, we're not able to increase that amount this year. However, we have the resources on the books, so we've got to cover what we can. And to that end, what we're also looking to do, thanks to Petrina's help, is figure out how best to leverage those resources more fully. So if, for example, we only need two and a half people for that hundred ninety thousand dollars, and I'm just, you know, throwing out numbers, the other half a person will be dedicated to another program and helps for a different opportunity program, for example. So again, our goal ultimately is to interrupt this process earlier so that we can basically try to increase the budget for future years. But in the current session, we effectively are going to try to make the most of it and again try to...
So we're tied to the county budget that's always in place and so forth. But is there a notion that, okay, we've now identified this is hundred ninety thousand for twenty years, let's try to get that number bumped next year in the normal county process? They're looking at you because I know you're so familiar with that.
Yeah, absolutely, Jeff, yeah. Their budget process will start as far as their operating budget in the late summertime frame, so...
I mean, it doesn't seem unreasonable to me to revisit that number.
No.
No, I think a big piece of this is understanding that we are, well, going back to the review of the metrics, how successful is this program? Is how beneficial is it to the county? And selling that success, to have it for twenty-nine years means that, well, to me, it would seem that we're doing some work. The monetary piece of this is that where we are impacted is that we are obligated contractually through our union contracts to pay for these positions. And if we said, you know what, we're not doing this anymore.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not suggesting that.
No, 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 I'm just saying, we will still have to pay for those positions. So we could not just eliminate, so we are in a bad situation.
The point you're making is that if we started a hundred and ninety, or twenty-nine years ago at a hundred ninety thousand dollars, our deliverable for that hundred ninety thousand dollars is significantly less than it was just because of inflation. And that's part of the discussion we're going to have with the county executive in the county as we're going forward with the budget, and they're aware of what we're delivering. So we do provide regular reports on this and, you know, to that end, part of the question is, are they comfortable with us continuing on reducing the amount of deliverable? Or are we going to try to invest in it to make it more robust and more commensurate with the original?
Sure, as long as it's revisited, I think that's perfectly fine. The county supports us in a number of ways, right? So maintenance of effort tends to be where we look and focus. But if there's other little pockets like this where the county, you know, we made the point the county's in a very different financial position than we are, where we could reasonably ask for a boost.
So candidly, you know, maintenance of effort is something that they don't like to touch typically, as you well know. But it does provide us the opportunity, as, you know, I mentioned, Bill went forward with a thirteen million dollar capital request. I think has hopefully pretty good legs.
Yeah, I don't want to get too nickel-and-dimey with the county because they've been tremendously supportive. They had a million dollars last year. They've helped us in the pandemic, et cetera. So, and I know you're internalizing this, but whenever I see a contract where the number stays static for twenty years, you say, hmm, one side or the other is disadvantaged there.
Yeah.
And to be clear...
Over these twenty-nine years, has the number of foster care youth been consistent?
Petrina?
That we helped? I mean, that's really the question, isn't it?
So the number has...
Come up a little bit to the mic, please.
So the number has increased over the last three years that I've been responsible for the program. So currently, there's two different metrics that we look at for this program. One is the students that are enrolled in post-secondary education, particularly those that are here at the college, and that's twenty-five students. And then a hundred students annually that participate in the mandatory workshops. So our metric for this program is the workshops. Secondarily, it's post-secondary enrollment. But the purpose of the goal is to really prepare foster care youth for employment and to maintain their employment.
But, you know...
So we've been helping even more at the same dollar level. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Yeah, the challenge that we have with, you know, these types of programs, and, you know, I think Jeff, you know, hit it on the head, is that our obligation as a college and per union contracts is that we maintain resources even as dollars stay flat or disappear if somebody works three years and one day. So for example, if somebody is funded on soft money, currently, we have to support them as if they're a full-time, fully paid student. them as if they're a full-time, fully-paid employee and effectively find a job for them if that soft money disappears. You'll never see that anywhere else. I've never heard of that before and you talk to anybody who's in any college, they've never seen that before. And it's a serious problem because, you know, although we're focused on this one relatively small opportunity, that that model precludes us from going after large grants. I mean, it disincentivizes us from doing what we should and need to do in order to help impact the the college's role in our community. So, you know, as we talk about impact bargaining and those types of things, you know, that's a key issue that I've already brought up with the AAECC.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Katrina. So may I have a motion to approve the agreement IBS contract renewal?
I'll move it.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Renewal approved. Moving to the budget audit and human resources, Chair Jeff Stone.
Thank you. We had a very robust meeting of the committee on April fourteenth, late afternoon. It went long. Thanks, David, for a comedy. I know you had a schedule crunch there, but we got a lot of time. Arda, you had joined us, thank you, and a number of others around the table. So it was a really, really good meeting, I thought, because the state budget had just come out. We got to talk about that at great detail. We got into the question of what we're doing on our budget. So when you see the word budget in our materials, be careful at what you're looking at. You might be talking about questions relating to our budget, but more likely in this particular set, you're talking about the state budget that came down. So when you take a look at, say, page sixty-two, it says, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three enacted budget overview and comparisons, and you might jump and say, wait a minute, we haven't enacted our budget yet. But that's the state budget and there's a wonderful summary of it, all of these points we talked about at the meeting. The overall point I would make about the state budget is, you know, you you have a whole bunch of money moving under the state budget, but it's really an excuse for a great deal of legislation that happens in late March, early April this year. It's comparable, lend to what they call the big ugly, right, at the end of June, two big moments in the state when they pass a whole bunch of stuff. And one part of it is in the budget because that's when leverage exists and negotiations are taking place. The other is at the end of the session when the time crunch comes and everyone wants to get out.
Wrap everything up.
So those are the two spots. So when you look at the budget, you're going to see a lot more going on than how much money did we get for community colleges? There's all kinds of changes. And the summary on page sixty-two, I would recommend for everyone because in one page, you're seeing the big ones that affect us. So we'll we'll cover just a little bit of that and then during the presidential report, it'll be covered and the chairwoman's report, they'll touch on some of this. But looking at it real quickly, we do have the human resources agenda. Why don't we take that up and adopt that resolution because that's the only action item we have under budget and that has to do really with Cynthia's position. So Dave, do you want to talk about that? We already talked about it to some extent, but we need to bless that hire, right?
Yes, so again, our intent here is to hire a demonstrated expert. The salary, which I I think we have to make public, is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Frankly, when you recognize the breadth of responsibilities that that are associated with the specific position, it's a reasonable, more than reasonable amount. And again, I think based on Dr. Buckley's experience and breadth of engagement opportunity, it's more than commensurate with with the need here. So I think it's, you know, the the right dollar amount that that should be offered. And again, you know, I'm thrilled that we have her. I think she's going to provide a significant benefit to our college and help us get to where we need to go on a lot of different fronts.
Yeah, thank you for for that summary. And again, Dr. Buckley, welcome and that was great to have you here from Oklahoma. Very interesting and closer to the East Coast, as you said. So, you know, I'm fine with that. I the question I had was one for you and maybe for Dr. Buckley, too, is the DEI position. Were we able to figure out whether we are able to combine that into the one office or do we have to have distinct hire for that?
So we don't have to have a distinct hire for it. And, you know, there is precedent whereby a chief diversity officer is shared between colleges. And candidly, before I made any decision, I did want to have that discussion with Cynthia to kind of see if she had a preference. But again, you know, I approached it with a couple of the local sister community colleges who, you know, are amenable to considering it. But I I do want to spend a little bit more time climbing through the job description and understanding whether or not it is something that could be contained, you know, with the VP of HR. But to be candid, I don't have an answer. I, you know, frankly, I just met Cynthia face-to-face this morning.
Yeah.
You know, I hope to be able to have that discussion in the next week.
Okay, well, that's, obviously, any chance we have, we don't want to diminish that role, obviously, but we, any chance for savings that we have is good. Dr. Buckley, I wonder, you are coming here from Oklahoma, so a pretty non-unionized environment and it. The hire is terrific and this is going to be adopted, but just curious how you are thinking about the notion of coming to a place, New York, the northeast, you know, some familiar with the east, but where we have, you know, pretty strong public sector unions and we have open contracts that have expired and how you think about that as you if you were debating whether or not to take this job?
So I look at it as an opportunity for me personally. I looked at it as an opportunity for me personally for growth as a HR leader and administrator and also to be able to come into it with fresh eyes and fresh perspectives, to be able to be able to go into these negotiations and these opportunities with a different perspective and point of view. I have had an extensive amount of work and relationships, working with negotiations but from a different perspective and starting to work with our legal counsels. So I'm excited about this opportunity and to to lead this effort for the university. So the job, we have a large task ahead of us, ahead of us. I've already been in the office all week. I've been in the office since Monday, here and there, because I'm a hit-the-ground-running type of person. And so when Dr. Balkan and I meet this afternoon to to get the charge, we're going to move full speed ahead without the lip of speed to to get everything done.
Additionally, you know, one one thing that I I want to add, you know, and I had this discussion about her experience with unions and, you know, frankly, it being that I haven't had the experience with unions and I've read through the agreements and, you know, I fully appreciate that Dr. Buckley is a quick study and, you know, this isn't difficult. But one of the things that's invaluable, candidly, is her experience with other institutions so she can assess whether or not something is really a consideration or a concern that might be hurting our ability to help our students. You know, oftentimes, over years, you know, terms and conditions can get added for whatever reason. And as we step back to renegotiate, I think it's critical that we make sure that we have a baseline understanding of the key terms that we have to revisit. And, you know, I've already taken a pass climbing through the AAECC and the FFCC agreements to say, okay, you know, I understand the benefit to a member, but we have to now step back, recognizing our fiscal situation, our financial situation, and say, is this the right thing for our students and is it the right thing for our college? I mean, we're in this together and, you know, I understand, I'll be the first to say, it's an asking business and if somebody's willing to give you something, take it. However, you know, we're now in a position where we have to ensure that we have a sustainable future. And to that end, collectively, we have to put all the issues on the table as we go into a renegotiation to ensure that it's a comprehensive understanding of what we're walking into. So, you know, it being that, again, Dr. Buckley has twenty-five-plus years' experience in this space, I'm a hundred percent confident that working together will have a very, you know, detailed approach to how we need to engage the unions in those discussions.
Can I just, you know, obviously, you're coming at a time when we have a lot of fiscal challenges, there's union contracts are up. Unions have a strong history here, particularly public sector unions here at the college. But I think in order for us to to be successful moving forward in this difficult situation, there has to be a respect on both sides of this situation. I don't think we can be successful if we go into it from an adversarial position. I think we need to respect who's been here for the last hundred years and go from there. Certainly recognizing that we are in a difficult situation and that obviously, things have to change. We have to do things differently. But I don't, in order to get there, I think we're going to have to be, have a mutual respect for each other. And that's, I think, is going to be important to, so we can be successful in getting these things done.
Yeah, and to reinforce that point, I mean, make no mistake, both Dr. Buckley and I are well aware of the fact that we're not going to get there by ourselves.
Right.
You know, this has to be a partnership like we've never had before at SUNY Erie. And, you know, to that point exactly, Trustee Lenahan, if we're going to reinvent our college, we have to recognize that the future is going to go to those who are agile, who are able to respond very quickly to changing environments, who are going to be able to assess situations, make decisions quickly. And, you know, that's that's part of why we're so interested in making sure that everyone sees everything that's on the table, including strategically, where we have to go.
Absolutely, looking forward to that. Absolutely. I think it's it's critical to respect those who have come come before us, respect everyone's decision-making and abilities and and history here. And so I'm coming in to to build on that and build on those partnerships, partnerships and those relationships. And so I'm looking forward to that. Absolutely.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the candid discussion that followed from that question. Thank you, everybody.
And I'd be willing to move the approval of this.
Thank you.
And recognizing that we're fortunate to have very qualified and, you know, new person come to the table here and easily.
Agreed. I'll second that.
May I have, no, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome, Dr. Buck.
All right, so that was our business item and the rest of the material is informational, but it's been pretty interesting. We did have the ASC financial summary report came to us last meeting, along with the second quarter financials. And I would say the highlight in that report was the fact that ASC did have the forgiveness of the second PPP loan under the COVID relief. And so that was very meaningful. It was something that I think we all expected would happen, but and because we did have an approval of the first PPP loan with them, I think it was last summer. So that happened and then so that led me to think, okay, I think the second one shot probably should happen. But until it comes in, you're never quite sure, you know, what you've got and we're glad to have that forgiveness, very important. So basically, they've been going along, trying to figure out where they have to deliver services, South Campus, City, North, where we need childcare, different level, food, all that kind of analysis is going on all the time and taking a look at at what kind of money is coming in and basically holding position through federal largess while we sort out this pandemic. So generally, I think that's what's been going on. Subject to David amending any of that or?
Yeah, I mean, the the one thing that I I do want to make clear, especially for the people who are new to to the board, ACS has already recognized that they could not financially support having a bookstore at South Campus or a cafeteria.
Childcare.
And consequently, right now, they've put on the table that they're not sure they can support childcare, primarily because the demand is not there. So again, across the board, the issue has not been anything other than the fact that there's very little demand. So that's something that they're looking at, they're trying to figure out how to evaluate. You might have seen that in the state budget, the state is very focused on providing childcare to the SUNY systems. However, that's for new childcare opportunities and consequently, they don't have the ability to tap into that to subsidize what they've got existing. And whether or not we need to or want to is another question, right? I mean, to basically buoy up a business that's not financially viable isn't necessarily the right thing to do. And by the way, the trend isn't strictly COVID-related. This has been a challenge prior to COVID.
Sue is trying to almost evaluate that itself on almost a student-by-student basis.
Yeah, so she's actually calling individual students, trying to offer the services.
It's something.
Yeah, it's really.
But it also shows you how how shrunk that has become, so. So it's a good report and we did have a pretty good discussion of ASC while, or ASC while we were talking. I don't think there was much going on on the supplier or the facilities rental side, usual waivers, we always check the level of those waivers and it's pretty consistent. Budget to actual is always interesting, but we'll probably be covering that in some depth in various coming reports here, particularly David's and with Bill's input. Capital budgets, projects, not much different there, the usual projects that are going on, some planned, some on hold. Lot of it ties into the RPK situation and what we're doing there, county support, but there's always an ongoing level of county and state-sponsored stuff that's going on here. So that's deep documented in our materials. The enacted budget summary, page sixty-two, is what I talked about earlier again, that's the state budget. And I think this point about the childcare being only new childcare wasn't even, not something we talked about at the meeting. We just knew the state is subsidizing childcare at colleges and maybe that'll help us. But David has refined and found some nuance in that that's a little on the negative side. Our budget discussion, we took what I would characterize as the first significant step at the committee level to talk about the new budget for the new coming fiscal year, which, as everyone is aware, starts September first and really has to be finalized by the end of May in terms of submission out of the board to the county, where the county gets to to bless it and has to approve it. So we're looking, now we're on late April and we had the meeting in mid-April, so we had a good discussion. We've got today where we'll talk about it at the board level more. Probably the hottest item within the budget discussion is the idea of whether or not we're going to authorize a tuition hike. We had, for everyone's recollection, last year, the notion at the board level that we would indeed raise tuition three percent. That came from our interim president's suggestion that we have an increase. And I think as a board working with Bill, we came up with three percent, looking at where we were statewide, what other colleges were doing, et cetera. And in the end, college leadership, board leadership, went to the county executive and basically worked it out that in exchange for not, in fact, putting on tuition hike in of three percent or any percent last year, we would get a one-time, one a one million dollar, and that was that added to the maintenance of effort? I think it was. So that was really significant. So that's a trade I would have made in a heartbeat and we did. So that's great. But we still, the arguments that supported a tuition hike last year are still extant. When we looked at this, where were we statewide? We haven't had a tuition increase in quite some time, three, four, five, five years, I think, of significance. And we we were high and we've been dropping because everyone else has been increasing their tuition statewide. And there was a chart that we got, and I'm not sure if it's in this week's updated materials or not, where we kind of see where we are statewide. And before, you know, we make a formal decision on that, I think we'll all want to look at that at the board. The chart, Bill, you remember it from last year, where the bullet point, where are we within the thirty-three? I'd like to see that again. It'll show us, I think, somewhere in the middle, not at the high or low end, but also at the top of the list in terms of having gone the longest without having raised tuition. Now, the first thought I, as a board member at a community college, have about a tuition hike is, hmm, not wild about that because I, the population of students we serve in the midst of a pandemic is a stressed population financially and in a lot of other ways. So not real excited about imposing a greater financial burden on students. But if we look at it more closely, as we did last spring, before we made that decision, we did see that, well, a lot of these dollars that we would imposing ostensibly on our students are actually being paid by outside sources. And that would be TAP, the government, federal funding, scholarships from the foundation that we talked about earlier. And we may have to boost that piece of it because the idea, I think, from the board is, man, we are in a. man, we are in a terrible financial situation with a great deal of challenge. We're working on that every month. David was hired with that knowledge of that's coming, he's made a lot of proposals. Bill worked on rescuing us from even a worse-looking situation two years ago. So we can't turn our eyes away from that. That is our responsibility as trustees, that we have to keep the place afloat and open and functioning for anyone to be served or anyone to be paid a paycheck. So we start with that. But then, you know, what can we, what can we do? Can we look at this a little more closely and say, hmm, this may not be hurting our students to the extent that we can? And if I'm wrong about that, let me know of it because I do wanna know about impacts. And as board members, all of us wanna realize, what will this do for the students here at SUNY Erie? You know, what will that mean? Will it hurt us in enrollment if people drop out? Where are we? But it's really important to see where's the money really coming from. So Denise, you were front and center at figuring this out last spring. We talked about it, you are take second place to no one in terms of being caring about what's going on with students and how much they have to pay. So I'm really channeling our chairwoman when I'm talking about here, at least about the students. But we also, I think I'm also channeling our president and our interim, former interim president, and all of us about keeping the place open and functioning and, and serving. So that's a prelude to a discussion that we have to have as a board of trustees about what are we gonna do on tuition? I think our proposal included a 3% increase in tuition, which is going to be, at last check, the recommendation from Dave, Bill, and others, Arda, who've worked on this. But that's a board decision, so we have to, you know, make that part of it. We're not making that decision today. I think until May, we actually will vote on the budget. But I think we ought to have a discussion today about that, as we did at the budget committee meeting, okay? So that's the story on the budget and the tuition hike from my perspective right now.
So additionally, you know, I don't know if Bill or someone else wants to comment, but one of the other things that, that's the consideration, and I think you framed it very nicely about, you know, who will ultimately have to pay for this. You know, there has been Pell increases, there's partial Pell that's now being offered to part-time students. So, you know, frankly, our initial assessment suggests that, for the most part, students are not gonna be impacted by this 3% increase. And it's probably commensurate with what many of our peer sister institutions are considering moving forward.
And with our concerns about, you know, the point you made earlier about, does the ask-me reluctance to make transfers presage a reluctance on the part of senior faculty to take the retirement? You know, we think we have a nine or $10 million thing that we can eliminate through a lot of this, but it could, if it doesn't move, 3% will only be a finger in the diet.
Additionally, you know, I, I think we need to be clear-eyed in looking at that retirement incentive. Because frankly, if that retirement incentive does not take and we're in a position whereby we've reduced the number of class sections significantly and all that's happened is we've removed adjuncts from our books, this financial model does not close. I mean, we're, we're just prolonging death. I mean, I hate to be that abrupt about it, but, you know, a financial model that's viable requires that we have a mix of adjuncts in full-time. It being that adjuncts should probably be three times more than, than the full-time in order for you to say, yep, you've got a viable strategy here. Additionally, if we're in a position where we don't have enough people or adequate number of people, full-time eligible people take the incentive and we end up having to cut our, our part-time or adjunct base, that's gonna be devastating in that the likelihood that we're gonna be able to pull them back without having a closed model is gonna be challenging, right? So, you know.
It's difficult because all of us appreciate the careers that those senior people have had here at SUNY Erie and the faculty, administration. And it, it, it just feels counterintuitive to be leaning so hard on those folks. But that is frankly where the dollars are, where the meat is on the bone and.
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, the public doesn't fully appreciate that a community college model, funding model, is significantly different than a private college or a four-year college model that has research, that's supporting faculty, that has all sorts of avenues to enable significant salary increases. And, you know, to that point, when you have your fringe benefits equal to about 41% of your salary, you can greatly appreciate the disparity that, you know, one highly experienced, you know, person who's, again, provided significant value to the community over years. But if they're making $120,000, 40%, 41% fringe benefits, that's equivalent to 10, 15 adjuncts. I mean, it's, it's just, you know, if you just look at it from a purely financial balance, it's devastating to see, you know, the situation we're in. And it's disappointing, it's upsetting, but it's all the more reason why I'm cautiously optimistic that the faculty federation and the other unions will step up and really promote this, realizing that if it doesn't happen, we're gonna continue to see fiscal challenges.
I think it's also important, I'm sorry, I think it's also important to put just the human side to this a little bit. Many of these individuals that we're speaking about have, have given, you know, 30-plus years to this college and, and not just their time, but they enjoy what they do. They, they love the work. And we appreciate every single hour that they have given to this college. However, we do know that there is this fiscal crisis. And what does that mean? What does that mean if class sizes are now moving from, you know, I don't know, five to seven to 27? How does that impact you, your, your enjoyment of teaching this course and doing this type of, of work? As we're moving to more holistic approaches to education through guided pathways and other modalities, like how does that impact the, the quality of your, you know, your happiness? Because there's gonna be a lot of changes that happens in, in the college and the way we instruct. So I, I just would take this moment to really thank these individuals that we're speaking of because I don't wanna speak of them as just numbers. And really just say that we appreciate everything that you have done. And perhaps, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Balkan, there's opportunities for some of these individuals who will accept the retirement incentive to come back as adjuncts.
Without a doubt.
Okay, and so being able to still utilize your, your knowledge and expertise and helping the college move to other areas is very important as well.
You know, I think we should even, and I think Denise, your comments are right on point. I think in order to even maybe help sell this program, because the next month is crucial, who's gonna take this and who's not, is we, the college in some way recognize.
Yes.
Have an appreciation day. Because I, I myself have friends here that have been teaching 35 years. By the way, they teach 20, 25 students, they do, you know, the health area. They're outstanding and I, you know, literally love these people. And, you know, but they're feeling like, yeah, okay, we've gotta go because the college is, is an. I, I just think we need to express our appreciation and maybe have some sort of a day where we just honor these people that have had 30 or more years and let them know, yes, this is a difficult time, but we're fully cognizant of your contributions to this, to the school. That has to be done in order to make this, anybody feel good. You know, this is, yes, it's time, but, you know, you're really appreciated for what you've done. And, and they're taking the step to make this good for us. So I just think somehow one of our PR geniuses have to, in some way, recognize these people.
I agree fully and, you know, I, I know all of our faculty have a calling. And to say you're hanging up your, you know, your experiences and you're walking away from your calling, that's, that's a tough thing. And I think everyone recognizes that, acknowledges it. And, you know, the, the amazing thing about our faculty is many of them have literally dedicated their entire professional career to this college. You know, that's no small statement. I mean, I've had seven different jobs, you know, different organizations, different careers. You know, I didn't spend the last 30, 35 years with one place investing everything I had. And, you know, arguably, when they could have probably done financially better elsewhere. So it, it's not a, a light ask by any means. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, we are in just a terrifically terrible position that, you know, hopefully people will understand that if they can financially do it, we'd love to have them come back as faculty emeritus tutoring or mentoring students or, you know, serving, you know, in some.
Adjunct way, whatever.
Yeah, exactly. And, and again, make no mistake, we're all concerned about the brain drain. So, you know, I think Jeff brought it up first and foremost. I think it was the first comment that was made when we initially recognized the aggressive actions we're gonna have to take. But, you know, again, our hope is that, you know, they'll continue to be just great servants of, of this college and continue to figure out how best they can help us be successful moving forward.
Can I interrupt really quick, only because I have to leave? If I may just redirect our agenda, because we have one item that still needs to be approved before I leave. But I definitely am in agreement of recognition of something and not just for the show. Like definitely, you guys know I'm, I say things from my heart. Definitely something from, from the heart to recognize these individuals and their contribution. But I do, I do need to interrupt the budget and audit report really quickly. We have the board of, the board of trustees minutes from March 31st. We have to have, we have to vote to table them. And I missed that. So may I have a motion to table the board of trustees minutes? Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
All, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. And then also, if I can just segue into my chair report before I have to head out. And then Vice Chair Stone, you can finish everything off for us.
Just keep talking.
Just for my chair report, I want to just highlight, Dr. Sagai mentioned that I spent three days last week listening to SUNY guided pathway presentations. Outstanding and inspiring are the two words that come to mind. I know, I wanna thank Andy, is he here?
Andy Inesey.
Okay, no, okay. Yeah, I wouldn't, I, I don't know sometimes who's behind me. Andy Inesey for the work that he has done and trying to get SUNY Erie guided pathways ready. This is going to be, I mean, we've been working on it for some time. I know it's been in the, in the language and the minute, in the minutes of the board for some, some time now. But I feel like it's gonna have a home. And Dr. Balkan and I have spoke about this and making this a priority of the college. And basically, in, in short, a lot of the presentations I will want to share with the trustees, they're, the, the sessions were recorded, recorded from the keynote speakers. And I think it would be very beneficial for all of you to listen to the presentations as they talked about how guided pathways, best practices and such. But it is a holistic approach to ensuring that not only are we enrolling students and not just Austin, but students who need us the most, but we are providing the wraparound support so that they are not placed in non-credit courses, so that they are finishing within a, you know, a desirable amount of time. I think someone mentioned spending six years out of community college is not really the goal. So that we are achieving, so that our classes and our schools are diverse, so that they are not, so our diverse population specifically in some areas of black males are, are not geared to lesser high-demand curric, courses. Yeah, programs. So making sure that they are geared towards the STEM courses and the ones, the other workforce courses that are in high demand, there is a lot of data that support otherwise. And our college has, I guess, I guess the word I'm looking for is reinvigorated this approach. And Dr. Balkan has said specifically, which I love, is that we are going to integrate this idea of guided pathways as a, as a culture for SUNY Erie. And so for people coming in, be it staff, faculty, anyone new, this will be a part of their orientation, a part of the, this is how SUNY Erie moves. And we want this to permeate through the veins of the college and become part of the culture. So that was well worth my time, those three days and listening to the keynote speaker. SUNY as a whole, we have a lot of sister colleges that are considered best practices in our states that we can pull from, pull information from. And I, I'm just really excited as we are going through this new strategic plan process and new middle states, this is just a great time. Even though there's a lot of doom and gloom, there's also a lot of optimistic things that are hap, or things that are happening that are making me optimistic, and this is one of them. So I will make sure those are shared. As a matter of fact, Kelly, can you please track down those recordings for the keynote speakers and share with the rest of the trustees? That's how I make sure it's shared. Leave it up to me. The other thing that I want to briefly talk about is the YEC contract. And I won't go into too much details, but what we learned, what I've learned since, well, it was right before the past meeting and I didn't want to speak on it too much then. I wanted to get a little bit more information. You, you may recall trustee Macielo explaining the YEC contract. And that was the community foundation and other, other funding sources wanting us to be this hub of the youth employment center. It turned out that we, SUNY Erie was not able to keep this contract and be the sole per, the sole entity in this hub, although Dr. Balkan and Katrina have worked diligently to make sure, to ensure that the partnership is still alive. However, I just want to say this very transparently, very candidly. We as a college need to work together in order to usher in these type of opportunities. We as a college have to remember to be, I think I'm hearing these words today, flexible, nimble, and understand what is best for the students and the community. We have to operate outside of these walls, outside of these campuses and know that the community, the future and current students are what will keep us growing. It is not trustees, it is not a president, it is not faculty or staff. We have to be, we have to be very aware of the big picture and not let, not let, let, let's not let opportunities that can potentially help us expand and partner with workforce, with private donations, with community partners, let's not let those opportunities dwindle because of. Let's not let those opportunities dwindle because of, um, anything. I don't care what it is, I'll just make it broad. We, we need those, we need the outside to help us grow. So as we are going forward, um, in, in this work, there's a lot of opportunities. As we spoke, as we heard from the foundation members, board members today, they want to work with our college, but we cannot be our own worst enemy. We have to be open to opportunities in order to grow. And I won't go into any further details about that, but I think it's important for us, and I say us as a college and all players within, to understand that we have tremendous opportunities here, tremendous. And in my opinion, us not being able to see this YEC project to fruition is a black eye. And I will hope that this is our lessons learned for us, um, and we move forward, uh, and we move forward differently to ensure that the people who are knocking at our doors are being welcomed to, to enter. And I'll leave it there. So, with that being said, I do wanna thank everyone for their hard work on the project. I know a lot of people put a lot of time into this, and so I do wanna thank you for that. I look forward to hearing about the other partnerships that, um, are, that will come and, um, how it all plays in, into our growth. So, I do have to excuse myself, um-
So you want me to follow that? What's that all about?
Jeff, you know when I get going, I get going. But thank you, everyone.
Very well done.
All right.
Can I suggest we take two minutes?
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
We convene at eleven, eleven-twenty.
Candice, working with Kelly on the orient, on that orientation. This is gonna take me a second, but I'm not, we, we realized we were a little further behind than I thought. Um, however, we'll figure it, we'll, we'll get this together. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. And did you get the email at Montbiota time of July?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry I didn't respond.
Oh, no, that's-
I definitely did. That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Kelly, how it's, uh, I enjoy being on the bench.
Oh, I love it. Yeah.
It's got, you're really seeing the real, I remember when, when I was a leadership buffalo, this is thirty years ago. We, uh, one day we sat in county court, or, uh, city court one day with Barbara Howes on the- and just the way that she communicated with somebody, it was, you know, and she would say, hey, cool it for a while, you know, you're like, it was like, you know, it felt like it took some, some of my class.
I know.
But it was, uh, but no, you do see the hardcore reality of, uh-
Yes.
Of life.
I know. I think every politician should come sit through city court.
Yeah, sit there for a while.
You could really see who's kind of like slipping through the cracks, you know?
Right, absolutely.
And a lot of them are just like, people who are running.
Uh, good for you. I'm glad you're enjoying it.
Did I say small children on your screen?
Um, yes.
A two-year-old.
A two-year-old.
Oh, you've got a two-year-old for it. I like that, love it.
She's two and a half.
I just had my three-year-old guy, like my grandson over yesterday, and hard to keep up with them. By three, they're ready to move.
Oh, yeah.
Well, she has just recently turned into this chatterbox.
Right. Right. That's great. That's great. But I've got twin granddaughters who are three and a half, and they live in Cincinnati, so. They're just like wild, like, damn, this is really up to all kinds of stuff.
All right, if we could gather ourselves.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Sure. I'd like to go back, uh, after honoring Denise's comments there, uh, as I'm sure I'm speaking for all the fellow trustees about that. Um, I'd like to go back to the discussion of the early retirement a little bit. And, um, we've had, that was a good discussion earlier before we had to segue over. But, um, I did, as I was listening to everybody's comments and agreeing with actually all of them, um, I was thinking to myself, gee, we've got, you know, a very respected senior faculty person here in the form of Colleen Quinn. Uh, I tune into most of the senate meetings and listen to Colleen run those meetings, which is very impressive, how she does it. And not only is Colleen impressive, but the people who interact with her from the audience are very impressive. And these are some of our best and most senior faculty members. Probably a lot of the people that we're talking about, you know, as being on a list that would be greatly financially beneficial to the college if they were to make a final sacrificial contribution in the form of an early retirement and taking advantage of this in senate. And so it's, I just, I'm glad Colleen is here for, for two reasons. One, I hope that she and through her, the rest of the faculty and the other administrative folks here at the college can understand how difficult this is for the president, the interim president, former interim president, and the trustees to contend with this. Because it's been a, ever since I've been on the board, this has been the discussion, the declining enrollment, and we all know the story. So the numbers are really relentless, and the pressure that puts on the trustees is great. And none of us relish the job that we have, which is to try to take an overview here and see how we can preserve this institution in some form going forward that benefits the most people. And so we've, we've reached out and found a president in David Balkan and an interim president in Bill Ruder that have helped guide us toward some resolution of that, but this is a painful discussion for us. And I hope that everyone online and in this room realizes just how difficult this is for the trustees and for the senior leadership of the college to deal with this. But Colleen, you heard us talking about things and, you know, you've shared a few things with me, both here and elsewhere. Would you just mind, you know, giving us your comments or takes and, I'll give you a chair here.
Sure.
And what you make of this as you listen to us.
Sure. Morning.
Morning. You know, you have a center report, this is the special edition.
Oh, thank you. So, um, you know, I'm in a lot of rooms with, uh, you know, a lot of meetings and, uh, get to, um, participate in many ways in the college. And through that, I work with, um, faculty and staff in all the spectrums. So, you know, part-time, full-time, all of the divisions. Uh, and so I know, uh, you know, our faculty very well, um, and I get to see, you know, both sides of it. Uh, you know, I'm based at South Campus. And, um, you know, with, that we had discussed, you know, communication and all that's gonna be coming out uh, much more strategically and crisply in the future, which is going to be fantastic. But like, uh, you know, at South, you know, you walk around and, uh, you know, there's junior faculty that, you know, have tears in their eyes and, because they don't think they're gonna have a job in the fall. Um, you know, and that's through, you know, uh, possible layoffs, but also, you know, deactivations and things like that. Uh, and then on the flip side, we have senior faculty, uh, that I use on a regular basis for, um, just all sorts of different things. Uh, one gentleman in particular, he helped us get our, uh, initial distance learning program off the ground and running as a faculty initiative, like fifteen years ago, back when we were an angel, which, that's like a dinosaur now, right? And then we did Blackboard, and he's going to be part of the team, um, of senators that are doing the, uh, Bright Space Migration pilot for summer session one and two. Um, and, you know, as a senior faculty member, uh, I know he cannot retire because he has other obligations and things like that. And I know that there are other senior faculty that, you know, consider it, but they also, uh, they're like, I don't know what I could do. I don't have anything to do. This is, you know, this is my life's work. What do I do if I'm not at the college? Um, you know, and then there's also people that wish they could go because, you know, there's lists in all the divisions and the departments. We know the seniority, and we know who's where. And if, you know, if I don't go, then we're gonna lose this person. And, you know, to be honest, uh, you know, I'm at risk as well. And, you know, I'm a full professor, and I will have my PhD in June. Uh, I think I have enough people under me in my department, you know? Uh, but that also is gonna depend on, you know, who takes the incentive and how far the layoffs have to go. Um, and, you know, it's something that is really, you know, felt everywhere in all the departments, uh, all the divisions and all the different faculty. Uh, my husband is a part-time instructor at City Campus. He's a geneticist by the day, uh, his day trade at Roswell. Uh, but he does teach, um, for our biology department at City Campus. Um, he's been at the college for twelve years, I think, as an adjunct. And, you know, he has also been released, uh, for the fall. And it's not, um, a financial impact on our family, it's more that he's in a lab all day working with, uh, tumors and cells and DNA, and just that he gets to come and, you know, work with people and show his joy, uh, for what he does during the day, and then bring that experience in. And that's also what a lot of our adjuncts do, um, as well. So it's, it's, you know, it is, uh, we recognize obviously how hard it is. Um, and it's sometimes feels like we're maybe in a vacuum, and you only hear certain things. You hear rumors, you know, you hear different things about buildings and programs and, you know, how deep cuts may go or may not go, right? There's all these different sides, and, you know, it's, it's being felt, um, from the very bottom to, to the very top. And everybody's very, you know, cognizant of, you know, where we are, and what needs to be done, but also trying to not take it personal, you know, 'cause it's, but it's, it's, it's a difficult thing. And I know it's, you know, hard for everybody, uh, but it, it is being felt. And I know it's also the same, uh, you know, for our AAACC members as well. I don't get to interact as frequently with them because I'm, you know, mostly on the academic side, but, uh, but it, it is very deeply personal for all of our faculty and staffs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks very much, and congratulations on your doctorate.
Thank you.
About this tremendous achievement.
My dissertation topic is actually, um, because of our college and, uh, some of our senior faculty members. Uh, at, in the math department, um, we're running a pilot for core requisite courses that involves including developmental materials into our, uh, credited math courses to shorten the length of time and money that our students have to spend, uh, getting their, their math requirements done for their degree programs. So that's my dissertation topic, so thank you to the math department, uh, for helping me out on that, so.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colleen.
Sure.
Well, in a couple of weeks, we're all gonna, or most of us are gonna go to graduation and see the students cross the stage, faculty members in attendance, and, you know, decisions and discussions like this will become even more painful than they already are as we, as we see what the essence of the college is really all about. Um, I, I, we've gotta honor everyone in the mix, the people that you talked about in your remarks, Colleen. Uh, all of us who are, who are confronting numbers that just don't yield to greater emotion and desires of what we would prefer. Um, we're just gonna try to figure out as much in good faith as we can going forward together. How can we, how can we get this where it can be? And sort of, not only surviving, but thriving in some way. But, um, I just never wanna have the discussion you just led too far from the table because these are real people with real concerns, huge contributions. Um, and we are looking in some sense for people who have maybe not a reason to make a final sacrificial contribution to the college to do so nonetheless, because the numbers are unyielding, and that's, that's a very painful thing for us, so. Dave, do you wanna add anything on to-
No, I mean, I, I wish I could say as beautifully as, as you have, you know? Again, just seeing the people and, you know, I, I keep focus on, you know, they, they know, you know, they've known for the, for years what your purpose was, you know? And to have the opportunity to get up every day and deliver and change the trajectory of students' lives, you know, it's, that's a tough thing to walk away from because, uh, you know, independent of how many years you have, once you get a taste of it, it's, it's addicting, you know? Because you know that you're changing lives and you're, you're helping people. And again, you know, my prayer is that ultimately, people, you know, whether they, you know, have an opportunity to go or not, they, you know, they basically recommit themselves to that purpose and recognize that moving forward, you know, if you've got the opportunity, you know, and you don't know what to do next, there's still service that can be provided to the college. Uh, you know, again, whether it's volunteer or mentoring or, you know, the experience and expertise, the, the brain drain that, you know, you referenced initially, is, is something we're seriously concerned about. I mean, this is a fine line we're trying to walk, uh, and it's a very complex environment. And, you know, I don't think there's anybody here who doesn't appreciate, you know, what we're asking people to do. But again, um, you know, you keep talking about, you know, the, the numbers are, you know, unrelenting, you know, it's, it's-
And I don't think we do ourselves a service by saying, you know, some, some kind of money is going to descend from the sky. It did happen in pandemic. It did happen in pandemic. With these, these discussions would have been two years ago without pandemic relief. And we've been, it bought us some time to continue to try to see how we can do it as best we can. But we were, I mean, that was a just, you know, Bill has illustrated so many times for all of us. Now, the it would be a wonderful thing if the county could just come up with more money or the state or the federal government could to keep everyone employed without drastically reducing or maybe even with a change of approach and footprint and programming and so forth, but not have it be so drastic on these very valuable faculty members or life-changing for people in the college community. But at this point, as trustees, what we have to do is say, what do we have in front of us and how are we to react to that, looking at our overall fiduciary responsibility to keep the institution cogent, alive, functioning and and a major, as it always has been, community asset. So we we are struggling, as you are, and we will try to steer as carefully as we can that line that David talked about. Trustees, other trustees, any other comments before we leave that general topic?
No, I just think we've set a nice tone for today to let everybody know that we care about everybody at this institution and that, yes, these are challenging times, but I mean, you know, and we need to provide the leadership showing that we we care about these people and how they may be affected. Hopefully, we've, you know, if early retirement goes well, we find a way to save as many people as we can and and continue what we do here. I mean, this, again, this is here for the, as Denise said, we're here for the students. The bottom line is it's their lives that are really on the line here. And, you know, where do they go if we're not as viable as we've been in the past? Perhaps there's other options, but not as convenient as what they would have in their own backyard. So I just think we have to be understanding, kind, compassionate as we go forward into these difficult decisions. You know, there's going to be friction, there's going to be, you know, sparks are going to fly at some point, but there's a mission here that we've got to accomplish. And this isn't being done because of anybody's anger with anybody or, you know, disrespect for anybody. It's just a a time whose time has come. We've got to, we've got to make this moment work. We've got to meet the moment, but we've got to do it compassionately and, you know, and let people know that we care about them and their their families and their lives. And we we and we're going to do the best we can to make this place work.
Any other comments? All right, I'm just going to finish up a couple of little topics here and then we'll move on. The budget actual we talked about, that'll be a little bit later. Facility, the enacted budget, preliminary budget discussion will be, again, part of what what we talked about with David. It's a really good, robust discussion. I I like the separate budget and audit committee meeting format. I know it puts a little more burden on Arda and Dave and a few others, but it it gives us a chance to really go deep in what's going on. And I feel a lot more confident coming into board meetings, having had a separate budget meeting. The transaction report we talked about, again, congratulations. Minutes of the budget audit in the Human Resources Committee from March 24th. The only thing I'll say about that is how terrific those minutes are. I made that point at the last budget meeting. They were just so well done by Kelly and others who were involved. They are really, really, really helpful in terms, because sometimes we get pretty deep in the weeds and it's great to see the minutes. So there we are on that. Let's see, now, policy and governance. Kate, I think you're next on the agenda because unless anyone else has something strictly relating to budget, we'll go to Kate and policy and governance. Anyone?
Jeff?
Yep, go ahead, Kate.
Okay. You see before you the minutes from the March 2nd meeting, they're there for the board's information. We have not had a meeting since March 2nd. Our next policy and governance committee meeting will be June 1st at 4:00 PM, and we invite everybody to attend.
Good. And Carrie, strategic planning and assessment, we covered some of that earlier, quite a lot, actually, strategic planning, but.
Yeah, actually, so our our minutes are there also included for everybody's information from our March 2nd meeting. Both our March meeting and our April meeting, bulk of it was centered around creating our plan to make the strategic plan, most of which was shared with you by Kathy and Adia when they were up here earlier when we were asking for the extension. So there's a lot of work done with regard to just sort of laying out what we have done that can be used to make our plan, what we need to do in the future, and what a realistic timeline would look like in order to come up with a plan that's going to have those measurable, attainable goals that we all want to see implemented. And so I think both of, with the extension that was approved earlier today, we have a good roadmap on how we're going to be moving forward with the strategic plan. And I don't think I need to go into that with any more detail because of everything that we discussed earlier, unless Dr. Balkin or Adia or Kathy want to add anything. I think we'll discuss that as well as some additional middle states topics at our next meeting. Was there anything from middle states that you needed to address today or?
I think what we'll do is perhaps we'll decide as a committee to present some high level where we are with middle state in terms of our timeline and what we've accomplished thus far.
Okay.
To respond to the report of September.
The September report, okay. So our next meeting is now scheduled for May 10th, although I know that now that I just found out that Dr. Balkin can't attend, so maybe we'll reschedule. We'll talk about that offline. If the date changes, we'll circulate that to everybody else. So I think that's all we have for today.
Thanks, Kara. And then technology, I will admit to having one item of of business that kind of falls between our two committees. It's the workday situation and the transition and and it has such a financial impact and there's such a history there that it's, I I've been paying attention to it in our committee and asking that it be a regular monthly thing. And we did have a robust discussion of it a couple of weeks ago. I don't intend to repeat that discussion at every board meeting, but I just want to honor the notion that both of our committees are talking about that and thinking about that. And then Davis, do you have any further report to make about it?
We didn't meet, we, so we meet every other month. So we didn't have a meeting this month. We have a meeting next week on the 2nd. And I'm sure a bulk of our meeting will be dedicated to the workday agenda.
It's really properly with your committee, but I'm just keeping an eye on it because of the financial impact.
Yes, that makes sense.
And so not to preempt or anything, but that's at least, it's a big subject. It probably bears two committees. Dave, anything on more on that or?
Well, you know, obviously, it's a significant concern. And, you know, I think having spoken with many faculty members, staff members, the priority couldn't be higher. And, you know, our interest in trying to figure out how to migrate to the Illusion Banner solution, you know, has to be aggressive. To that end, you know, we're continuing to have discussions with ITech at Buffalo State about potentially identifying a CIO as a service model whereby we could tap into some of the CIOs who retired from actually SUNY's and other colleges and universities in the area who've expressed, you know, potential interest. We haven't finalized anything to date and, you know, candidly, the opportunity to leverage ITech is such that, you know, we could potentially save money because of the service model that they provide. It's a very expensive position to to support independently. I I think recent studies have suggested that most CIOs would command between $180,000 and $220,000 in salary. And the typical ITech model would be $165,000 per year all in, meaning no benefits above and beyond that. So again, be a great opportunity to ideally tap into somebody who has direct experience working ideally in the SUNY system on banner solutions.
Well, that would be good, you know. Well, it's a constant subject, so we'll return to it as necessary. Len, marketing, anything to report?
Yeah, we did meet. We're sort of revamping our committee and our operations, Dr. Balkin and Paula and I, and might have been another person or two on that. But we talked about, first importantly, internal communications as well in terms of how we communicate course offerings, news that's going on on the campus to keep, to create a culture inside the campus where everybody knows what everybody else is doing. And then, you know, we started a discussion about external communications as well, you know, certainly during high enrollment, you know, opportunity times and things like that. You know, I just think, you know, we we're getting this committee back to what it probably shouldn't have been doing a long time ago. And I don't know, Dr. Balkin, if you have any comments, but I I was heartened by just the the stress on the internal communication, you know, let's start, let's get our house healthy first and then move out into the outside. But I don't know, any thoughts?
Well, you know, I I do recognize that marketing has been a weakness for the college. And, you know, I think everyone has acknowledged that. And, you know, moving forward, I do think we have to figure out if there's a way we can engage with a local funding organization, a donor, to potentially enable a third-party marketing organization to help us jumpstart our restructuring of what we should and could be doing, you know, everything from, you know, our internal communication strategies and methodologies. And again, part of it would be to enable us to step back and ensure we're truly assessing the comprehensive picture of what we should and could be doing. You know, Len highlighted nicely, you know, the fact that internal is one component of it, but frankly, we've, we probably don't have the level of expertise we need to do the external marketing that's really required to improve our brand, especially in the current environment. So, you know, again, it's something that I'd like to, you know, chew on a little longer and assess. Trustee Eunice Lewin actually connected me with a person who's a marketing person locally who does quite a bit of external marketing type work. I've had an initial discussion with that person. But again, you know, our financial situation is such that I'm really interested in working with the foundation to see if we can come up with a creative way of being able to enable something unique and, you know, maybe short term, just to reset our course.
That sounds constructive, yeah. Glad the marketing committee's invigorated. I think you've got a lot to think about there. This is a good example.
We're going to be to get in early, Mason.
Good deal, good deal, okay. We heard from Denise, our chairwoman, very good remarks. So now to David's presidential report.
So, you know, frankly, I've probably interspersed everything I was intending to say throughout this entire conversation.
Just been a bit free ranging.
But first and foremost, though, you know, I feel compelled to thank Bill Ruder for just an amazing job he's done in being able to help us move forward as I'm trying to figure out how best to define a new strategy to effectively reinvent and reinvigorate the college. Additionally, Kathy Celesto, Eric Malins, Adia, obviously, Arda, this core team and Scott, oh my gosh, Scott Urban, I mean, the the load that he's carrying is just, it's mind blowing. But, you know, this core team is really carrying the day and, you know, I can't say enough about them. I wish I could recognize them every day publicly. But, you know, over, you know, the course of the past, you know, nine weeks or so, you know, I've come to really appreciate the commitment and dedication that everyone has to this this college, you know, not just these people on my senior executive staff, but Colleen Quinn, the faculty, you know, across the board. There's people who, again, they love this college, they love what they do, they love the impact we're having. And, you know, that's what, to your point, makes it all the harder for us to figure out how best to position this for a more sustainable future moving forward. I I'll tell you, you know, the things that keep me up at night are our IT infrastructure. You know, that alone can can be just an amazing challenge, especially recognizing that if we migrate from workday to banner, we're going to have to figure out how to sustain that workday environment for probably two years while we implement banner. And, you know, I'm very concerned about Scott's team, you know, their ability to do that. We're looking at engaging with Banner to see if it's possible that they could actually provide an implementation team or if Huron Consulting Group could provide an implementation team to carry workday further while our team focuses on banner, which would be the preferred model so that we're focused on the future as opposed to the past. But again, you know, it's going to take a little bit of time to figure out how best to structure that. We're in regular communications and I know Scott exchanges emails, I guess, on a daily basis with the people from Illusion, Kevin Waterman, who's been one of our key contacts there. He's also been working with Michael Naterius at ITech and Bill Grau at CICUS. Again, those are two organizations that support banner for the SUNY system statewide. So there are some resources that we'll be able to benefit from. However, you know, the ideal situation would be, wouldn't it be great if there's, they had a team of five people each that could move to SUNY Erie and help us? Unfortunately, that's not going to happen. That resource isn't available. So, you know, we're going to have to walk a fine line for a while as we try to figure out how to keep Scott's organization fully afloat, you know, working closely with Kathy, who is helping to define the reports we need to ensure compliance. You know, I I don't think there is historically a great appreciation for the criticality that that IT infrastructure plays in the success of the college. I know I've gained a greater appreciation over the last several weeks. And so, you know, that that's a top priority. I'll tell you also, in parallel with that, you know, things are not all doom and gloom. You know, candidly, I've had the opportunity to visit everybody from Invest, Buffalo Niagara, to companies, the IDA. People are excited about what we can do and how we can contribute to this region. And the opportunities really are outstanding. You know, I I don't think I've met a single company that isn't interested in trying to figure out how to collaborate more closely to develop everything from a micro credential to a certificate to potentially a modified degree program, you know, as necessary. And, you know, a common theme here is that people recognize that bachelor's degree doesn't mean what it used to mean. And suddenly, primarily because of COVID, in which a lot of companies recognized that they couldn't access the skill sets they wanted as far as credentials, couldn't find people with bachelors or masters, they had to effectively settle for people that had associate's degrees. And all of a sudden, they realized, you know what? We can get it done with these people and we can get it done with people who have micro credentials or certificates. And frankly, I think it's it's going to lead to significantly greater opportunities for us. But again, it's going to require that, you know, we don't over commit and under deliver. You know, we have to make sure that we're in lockstep with these companies. And the business models that they're proposing are really exciting. And they stem, you know, range from them having their employees stay on their books, but they teach for us. I mean, think about the savings that would represent. And, you know, the model that a lot of them are envisioning is, you know, rather than have us basically do this internal training for 12 weeks for a specific, you know, level of competency or expertise, you know, what would happen if, for example, we took our trainers and rather than, you know, having to hire somebody, pay their their benefits, we were able to reach, you know, three times or four times as many people at once and be able to assess who has interest, who's going to stay? Because right now, you know, for whatever reason, a lot of companies have brought training in-house. And to be competitive, they don't want it in-house. You know, they they recognize they get, you know, the training completed and they lose, you know, 30, 40% of their people right away to a competitor who knows that they have that training capability and, you know, they effectively poach fully trained people.
Free riding on them.
Yeah. And and again, you know, it's happened forever. You know, this isn't a new phenomenon by any means, but but I will tell you, a lot of companies do see the significant value of, again, leveraging SUNY Erie to be that base competency, workforce development competency developer. So again, I I'm wildly excited about the prospects, you know. I literally have not met with a single company. We're talking about coming up with novel collaborations. You know, Scott Beeler, it was mentioned, he was our keynote speaker at the Advisory Council Breakfast. You know, he's one of our greatest advocates and he's also somebody who's willing to leverage his expertise and his weight to help us get in the door and have conversations with parties you wouldn't expect. And, you know, he's willing to do things, you know, frankly, a week ago he wouldn't consider doing, you know, to help us move the ball forward. consider doing, you know, to help us move the ball forward. And it's that level of commitment that we have, you know, in many of our alumni that is just outstanding. You know, one thing that Len, I think you brought it up, was this idea of identifying from a marketing perspective, the SUNY Erie 100 or the SUNY Erie 200.
Yes, yes.
You know, that is a critically important thing for us to do because the economic impact that this college has had and will continue to have on the region is phenomenal. And we, we need to be able to point to these successes. And by the way, by pointing to those successes, you know, and including them more on Advisory Council meetings and stuff, it'll help every aspect of our college, not only by tapping into their technical and business expertise, but also, you know, it'll unhinge, you know, the, the philanthropic thought process, you know? So, I, I'm, I'm really excited. I'm glad, you know, Len, you brought that up and I, I think it's gotta be a priority. It's also something candidly that a third party could help us do pretty quickly, you know? So, again, as we're looking through the list of activities, I'm stepping back and constantly trying to assess, okay, how would, how might we best affect this in the most efficient manner?
I'd put a high priority on that top 100 thing that we talked about last month and again now. Len, this is a good one for your committee, right? Because, you know, it just, I'm just picturing seeing, you know, a, a, a color, you know, kind of color insert. Look at the people who have started at SUNY Erie and gone on to be dynamic players within our community. 100 people and, you know, you don't have to rank them, but you could just put them in there. Everyone will know these folks or a lot of real important decision-makers will know those folks. And it'll suddenly increase our, our brand, our legitimacy. Some students might recognize some of the names as well. You could almost do a, a, an event or a dinner around it or something that could actually bring some money in if we announce, you know, our Erie County 100 or whatever we call it.
And I'll be candid, I, I think 100 is gonna be a low number. I mean, the worry I have is sliding people.
Well, right.
You know, last, uh, yesterday afternoon, I met with Mike Ruggiero, is that how you pronounce his name in architecture?
Yeah, Jamie, Jamie Ruggiero.
Oh, Jane, I'm sorry. And, um, you know, he was sharing that they had, you know, a review session where their council had, I guess, nine people show up to review students' work and six of them are from industry and, you know, several of them are leading architects in the area. I mean, big names, I mean, that have influenced significant structures in our region, you know? And I think about each department that we have, that probably can name five people off the top of their heads.
Right. Exactly, we know exactly.
So, again, you know, I think our greatest challenge ultimately will be, how do we, you know, maybe we have to start with the SUNY 500, you know?
Yeah.
And then, you know.
Maybe it's a Hall of Honor or Hall of Fame or some, something, you know, this is at best discussed at committee, not the board meeting, but.
Some sort of induction.
General idea, what should we do to really show the community who the heck has come out of this place and gone on to tremendous success and influence in the community?
Another thing I think the marketing committee should do at some point, maybe we can get the foundation to raise some money for it. Something we've done in, in campaigns for years and that is a, do a focus group. And we could do a focus group of, um, you know, potential students, but, but parents and also people in the business community to help us, you know, envision what, first how they perceive our college at this point and what they would like to see the college become. And, uh, it's in a, you know, like, there's like 12, 13 people, it's an incredibly effective way of, of connecting with the, you know, what the message should be or what, what is gonna sell and what is not gonna sell. That's probably even more valuable is, you know, what is our potential and, you know, where do they see it? It's something down the road, but I think the marketing committee could, you know, perhaps we get somebody to fund it and, you know, one of the local marketing, uh, companies that you're talking to or is, you know, quite a few around. I, I've seen it done a number of times and it's, uh, it's, it's a, a very insightful mechanism to have.
You know, I suggest putting both those ideas right on your agenda for May.
Right.
And talk about it.
Yeah, the one, one thing I will say though, um, the timing of things like that is critical.
Of course. That'll be part of the discussion, but.
No, no.
These are ideas that I would like not to have just fall off the table.
Right.
You know, so, um, okay, good deal. Enrollment, do you wanna have a specific enrollment report?
Do you have?
Eric?
Great. I'll go through it at a high level. I know Bob, I think you had the, the report as well.
So, I, I have to say, um, I, I can't even express how thrilled I am that Eric is on our leadership team, uh, to have somebody who is data-driven, knowledgeable, you know, experienced faculty member. He, he brings a breadth and wealth of knowledge that frankly, you know, we were blessed to find, so.
We're on a roll, two straight board meetings with great hires, right?
Great, thank you, Dr. Malcolm. So, I have here, uh, three different time periods with regards to enrollment, so I'm gonna provide an overview as we start to close out then our spring 2022 enrollment. Please note, um, where we are currently, the head count of April 22nd is not the exact same as the SUNY BI end-of-term data, certainly as the name implies, it's gonna be at the end of the semester. But as I monitor that, uh, looking at general trends that you see, consistent with what you're gonna find this afternoon with the RPK group analysis, uh, we are seeing downward trends at each of them, the campuses, the exception being there in the high school. And if Bob, if you go down a little bit further, when you look at then by student type, which is higher education history, you will see that, that corresponds very nicely with what's identified as the concurrently enrolled in high school. We call those locally then our advanced studies students. Certainly that is a sizable increase from where we were last year and we're continuing to see that growth with regards to partnering, uh, with our neighboring high schools, uh, with a 30% increase in enrollment there. The sobering news is if, when you look at then our continuing returning students, this is having a sizable impact when we look at then our financial dashboard, um, and where we are financially, the down 11% FTEs with that current, um, student population. What I do see as cautiously optimistic though, is our first time in transfer population, we are seeing that rebound, um, and that can have a substantial impact with then our enrollments, uh, for next academic year if continuing. So that, to me, is a, an area of promise. But overall, when you then consider that our continuing return students is by far and large our greatest area of enrollments, uh, that does then net that about three, three and a half percent down where we are currently compared to the end of the semester. Certainly at the May meeting, I will then have a better analysis of where we are with the end of the spring 2022 term. Any questions, at least on the spring enrollment?
Yeah, I also was probably remiss in not thanking Patrina, who also has extensive enrollment experience at SUNY Erie. And, um, frankly, we had a great conversation yesterday afternoon for an hour about historical ideas and brainstorming and how best to position us for greater success in the future. And, you know, frankly, I, I think, again, you know, thank you, Patrina, for your willingness to kind of cross silos and, uh, help anywhere and everywhere necessary. And frankly, that's the type of collaboration spirit that's gonna solve the challenges we have moving forward.
Thanks, Ray. Eric, uh, do you have thoughts on the 3%? For now, assume 3% tuition hike and its impact on enrollment that we should consider?
Yeah, so, one, the announcement came out with regards to the funding structures from Pell, TAP, et cetera, I immediately reached out to Scott Welch, uh, Department, uh, Director for Financial Aid, um, and I think it was at the same time that Bill reached out to him, so he probably got two calls in the same moment. Um, and when we were looking at then that $400 increase with the Pell grant focusing on that, uh, one of the questions I had to Scott was how many of our students are receiving that Pell grant and eligibility and then the full amount? And given that is a sizable portion, that, I feel very confident that that $400 increase, uh, from the Pell is going to then offset that 3% amount in tuition, which I believe also went into the analysis that the board is considering with regards to approving that, uh, tuition increase.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Helpful. Thanks, Patrina.
Uh, if we go down a little bit further, um, we are then looking at now summer enrollment. Uh, this was, to be perfectly candid, uh, an area that I had of concern when I was then looking at our point-in-time comparison starting on April 18th, which is not represented up here, but when looking at our head count and FTEs, um, it was actually down about 30% at that point in time. So I say that because of telling the story of where we have now come from. So as you see up here, this is on the April 22nd, um, although still down, now to that then 22% point in time. As of yesterday, we had then been at 19%. So I just wanna highlight that in the capture of the timeline, right? So, April 18th, I run that analysis, roughly about 30% down. As of yesterday, so April 27th, so a matter of, what is that, 11 days if I do the math correct, 10 days? We had gained about 11% in terms of our rate of enrollment for the summer. And to me, I think that is a testament of getting that information out. Myself and Dr. Sagai have had weekly meetings with each of the academic divisions to give them up-to-date information with regards to where they are with enrollments. That is by division, all the way down to the academic program. So being transparent with that information, I have felt the opportunity for these academic programs actually then reach targets and identify where they are at that point in time. But I'd also be remiss not to then include collaborations like with the College Senate and at that Senate meeting, which was timely, cause I think it was the next day, I shared that information. And I think then through that collaboration with faculty and staff, we have been then advocating for the summer as else falls, I'll talk about next, which I think have absolutely then collectively contributed to that increased rate of enrollment that we're seeing compared to where we were on April 18th. Our rate of enrollment from that point in time has increased by about 35% compared to where we had been with our rate as of last year. So if that trend continues, which I hope this message here to our entire stakeholders continues, um, I actually think that we'll be in a very good position for summer when we start our session at the end of May.
One thing I'm interested in is, not today, but on an ongoing basis, is how the advanced studies students are translating into actual enrollments at SUNY Erie. Because we see, that's consistently been a pretty bright spot amidst a rather dismal enrollment picture. So, it's interesting to see that and then are they really going to four years or are they coming here? Is our engagement with them in the high school forums, uh, paying off in the sense of familiarity, comfort, desire to, hey, maybe I could go to SUNY Erie? So, I, I don't think we've been able to quite quantify that yet, but we should pay attention to that.
But, you know, additionally, you know, Eric and I have had a discussion about this because again, that advanced studies, um, can be a great, you know, precursor to enrolling at, at SUNY Erie, obviously. You know, we're all interested in trying to ensure that that can happen. And, um, in my previous job, we implemented a software program called dualenroll.com that allowed students, when they enrolled in effective advanced studies classes or tool credit classes or even AP classes, they were actually enrolling at the community college in parallel. Because the community college was providing that credit. And consequently, the software also enabled us to basically push a button and tell them how far away from a credit on our perspective they were from the next credential, you know, be it a, a certificate or in a, a degree. And, um, you know.
A soft book.
To provide them, yeah, to say, hey, you mean I only have to take three classes and I'll get, you know, my certificate? Yeah, I'll do that and then I'll go to, you know, or, you know, maybe that's the start to a stackable credential that will lead me to, um, an associate's degree. So along those lines, um, you know, I'm a huge advocate of pushing advanced studies. And in fact, I've met with the president of the Faculty Federation, Andy Sacco, and, you know, he's highlighted to me that the, um, current contract does allow for faculty to teach in high school, not just oversee, you know, NACE-accredited high school faculty. And the reason that's of interest to me candidly is obviously I'm trying to figure out how to keep everyone gainfully employed and, you know, provide them opportunities as we rebuild the enrollment. Um, I've had conversations with Dr. Williams, who's the interim superintendent of the Buffalo Public School System, and her staff about this possibility. In fact, we're having a meeting tomorrow, I think, as a follow-up to talk about, you know, how we can do this. And, and the goal there is to identify advanced studies classes that can't be taught because they don't have, you know, the, the instructors at the high schools. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not interested in having our teachers, our faculty teach high school. You know, what we're interested in doing is giving these high schools an opportunity to have students experience college-level professors teaching and hopefully build their confidence, you know? Let them experience and taste success, um, you know, be able to leverage those faculty in that environment to promote the opportunity to go to SUNY Erie, right? So, as opposed to just having counselors that, you know, randomly touch, you know? It's, it's great to have people that you can point to and say, hey, you know, this guy's, you know, or this woman is in the school three days a week at these times and if you have questions, you know, they have the experience to answer most of them.
It's nice that you were able to come in and find an advanced studies program in place and not have to say, hmm, we should do that.
Yeah, and it's candidly, New York State is in really a strong position to grow advanced studies. Um, in Indiana, for example, they don't have NACE-accreditation at Ivy Tech yet. That 19 college system doesn't have NACE-accreditation and they're gonna struggle to keep it primarily because Indiana doesn't require teachers in high school to have a master's degree. And, you know, that's one of the requirements, that somebody has to have at least 18 credits in their field of expertise, you know, if not a master's degree. So, all that to say, you know, I do think our faculty especially would be a shot in the arm, it being that we've got such well-qualified faculty who could support and enable a growth in that. And I think I mentioned also, uh, in Indiana, um, we had the same number of high schools, lower number of students, you know, populating those high schools, but, um, the Ivy Tech South and Elkhart campus, I was responsible for, you know, that was responsible for that, those 45 high schools had three times as many advanced studies students as we have in the same number of high schools with more students, if that makes sense.
Would it be good, you know, for Colleen's husband, is that already used as an example, but, to go to a high school and teach a segment of, you know, biology or even AP biology and the kids would say, you know, this man works at Roswell and, uh, you know, hear about what he does all day? Tumors, I don't know. That, that's intriguing.
So, again, you know, I, when I talk about the breadth of opportunity, it's amazing. I mean, it's really outstanding and we just gotta get out of our own way and engage with the right parties in the community who are really looking to help us be successful, you know, because we're gonna make them successful.
Definitely feel that vibe. Uh, Dave, while you have the floor, is there anything that we skipped over in your presidential report that we haven't covered either in the wide-ranging discussions or in your segment?
Bill, did you wanna touch, touch on the financials at all?
Uh, I mean, we covered it pretty much at the subcommittee level. I think the big decision point is for the tuition increase. As Eric said, there was a deep dive on the financial aid impact and the true out-of-pocket for our students. We don't believe it's, uh, much of any. We are at 15th of the 30 community colleges as far as our current tuition rate. We've gotten a survey, quite a few are moving forward with tuition rate increases. So I suggest that if that 3% is included in our final budget, that we will still be around that 15th, 16th, 14th area, like right in the middle of the 30 community colleges. Just to sort of, uh, correct your statement about our past tuition increases. We've only had one in the past four years.
One in the past four years.
One, uh, 3%, and we're certainly the only one that went that way. Some of the institutions that are probably looking at a lesser tuition rate increase are those that have stimulus monies where, quite honestly, they don't know what to spend it on. They're not in the financial situation we are. So, there's gonna be cuts, there's gonna be a tuition increase and we will present a balanced budget. We have, uh, we should generate about a $5 million budget surplus for this current fiscal year, but that's including 12-plus million dollars of one-time federal resources.
And we, we did see that on the charts and the couple that you shared at the budget committee meeting. Do you wanna touch, uh, at all on the budget versus actual? I've got page 57.
We are ahead of budget. Uh, we, only through savings, vacancy control, our, you know, the budget was approved with 30 full-time vacancies, total value of a million 530,000. We're in excess of over $2 million of vacancies, so we're maintaining that vacancy control. You can just look at each of the personnel agendas, there are certainly more reductions versus additions on the full-time, so that is our saving grace. We'll see what happens with the early retirement center, but as of right now, we'll have a budget surplus, does not, you know, translate a actual.
Yeah, any discussion of a current budget either this year or for the coming, well, certainly, certainly for last year and this year, uh, is almost a dangerous thing because we are, uh, we relentlessly go back to the 24 million in federal relief funds that we've received, but it colors the entire picture in both budgets, so.
Well, additionally, when you, when we talk about the deficit, Bill, can you, can you kind of elaborate on the assumption? on the assumption with respect to the existing vacancies and whether that's comprehended?
Right now, the initial budget had included that same allocation of the 30 vacancies, totaling $1,530,000. So that will provide some flexibility as we go into the '22, '23 budget process. We could certainly eliminate all vacancies and just move forward, living off future vacancies. The unions have been very helpful, you know, trying to reallocate, redeploy staff for the vacancies, you know, you heard the president talk about the grant, the $190,000 grant, trying to redeploy some of the staff that are theoretically paid by the grant to other areas of the college. So we've been effectively doing that. But there's going to be more cuts depending upon the number of employees that move forward with the early retirement incentive.
And speaking of the early retirement, at the risk of repeating information I know has been shared in the past, could you just revisit the timing and the deadlines and when we sort of know what's going on with that?
We do not have signed agreements with either the Administrators Association or the Faculty Federation. I believe we are very close for signing off on the Faculty Federation. Within that, it's all the timelines are embedded. We will have a sense of the number of retirees, probably in the June timeline, they will, would be off the books at the end of the year because they have requirements in their contract, like a balance of contract. So our fiscal year, as you stated, ends August 31st. So we will not see any savings the current fiscal year of those retirees. Working with the Administrator Association, a little less advanced than the Faculty, early retirement incentive MOU, but we are trying to maybe accelerate so we can see some savings this current fiscal year. They do not have the same requirements as a teaching faculty, having that balance of contract.
When we meet again a month hence, what degree of input will we have about the effectiveness of that plan? And how would you recommend that we think about the budget without that input?
So my understanding, Bill, is that, you know, we're targeting to have, for example, for the Faculty Federation, a July 1st date is an irrevocable decision date.
Which would get you set up for the fall, but would not help us in thinking about the budget when we have to act on it in May, right?
Yeah, there's, you know, something we could do with vacancy control, bake in how many people have to leave the payroll to balance the budget and whatever is not satisfied through the early retirement incentive, that's the amount of cuts that we have to go.
Yeah, we can make a budget and then defer the activities under that budget till later in the summer when we have it. So does that make sense to everybody? What we're doing?
Is it also true, so, and I think it is, but starting September 1st, we no longer have any more federal dollars?
As of right now, there's no known additional dollars for next fiscal year.
Correct.
And state?
State budget was really no help to community colleges. There was nibbling around, you know, talked about the TAP and the part-time TAP, but direct support. We are starting next fiscal year, two of our largest funding sources, two of the three, tuition fees is our largest, but status quo, no increases, no increase in state aid, no increase in county support. So, you know, when you're looking at 40% of your monies or 50% of your monies, there's no increase. The tuition and fees has to offset your expense increases and everyone's living what's happening with inflation. 80% of our budget is salary infringement. So that's our cut. We don't know right now, this fiscal year, we talked about the LMHF report, we're seeing a very large surplus. We did not have any increase in our health insurance this year, no guarantee for next year. I just don't know what the, it's going to happen. So there's still many challenges on the horizon, all short-term.
And I know it's been a subject of discussion in the faculty, everyone involved with the college, you know? Can't we get some kind of a bailout, some kind of a rescue? More county money? David, how do you feel about, I mean, last year, we did get the extra $1 million in exchange for giving up the 3%. Do you plan an ask of the county executive?
So I've talked to the county executive about that and he said, good idea, you should give a 3% increase.
Is it? Okay. Well, that's gaining more traction as we speak.
Additionally, though, you know, I will, you know, maybe defer to Kathy. I mean, she threw, you know, a pass to see whether or not there might be possibility for us to get some Final Cares Act dollars that are targeting...
That's what I'm thinking about.
Rural communities. So we don't clearly qualify. But, you know, to her credit, you know, she did apply for $10 million, but the whole bucket's only 197.
You know, I think it's going to be important, if we ask the faculty as we're pushing this and we've had the big discussion this morning, that we are able to demonstrate that we've tried every avenue to obtain additional funding, not to maintain a model that isn't, you know, sustainable in the long run, but just to get us, buy us as much time as we can and help us. I think we are all cognizant of that. No one's turning their back on outside funding, but, and it's not coming out of the air anymore. It was for two years. But we can't reasonably act in that, on that assumption. Now, if more money comes, great, because then we can figure something out, as we did with the pandemic relief. But I, none of us are sitting here thinking that's happening.
Well, I'll be frank, you know, in speaking with several of the legislators, you know, as we were trying to lobby for an increase in the state budget, I'd say 2 of 1, they basically said, you know, why would we give good money, you know, after bad? You know, I mean, if it's not being fiscally managed properly and, you know, you're basically telling us that this has been a challenge, you know, it's hard for us to say, let's give you another patch. You know, they want us to make sure we're doing the right things.
The push has come to shove, pretty well, I think, yeah. All right, well, that's just a point that, you know, everyone around the room would expect, so let's pursue every funding source we can, but let's not count, we can't count on it, so. All right. Did you, did we finish up with your?
Yeah.
Okay. Just make sure we're good here.
Thanks, Eric.
Travis is absent, so we don't have a student trustee report unless someone else has something to report on that front?
Okay, Colleen waiting in the wings up there.
Oh, yeah? Oh, good.
I can add some starting things.
Yes, please. Come on up, we got a chair right there for you.
So, hello again. This will be the actual College Senate report.
Oh, very good.
So separate from labor and things like that. But we met a week ago and, you know, as Eric said, had mentioned, you know, there's an enrollment push and, you know, make sure we get out there for, you know, promoting summer, promoting fall. So there's been several events at South Campus, because that's, of course, where my home base is. So our, we had an open studios for, today's the last day. It started Monday. We had a band, actually, in the library. It was awesome. They're called Star Juice, and they're on Instagram. You can find them on Instagram, it's starjuice.band. Well, they recorded their performance, threw it out there on Instagram and gave shout-outs to SUNY Erie, SUNY Erie Library, our SGA officers, our other organizers of this open studios event. It was really, really, really cool. Yesterday was a big day as well with that event. And so what I did, along with a couple other faculty, you know, wow, we get a lot of the work done in the hallway, you know, when we pass each other in the hall. So myself, some English faculty, other math faculty, and then we started opening other departments, said, hey, you know what? I teach in a computer lab with another computer lab next to it. Let's do a registration event, let's get the students. So we had faculty bringing their classes in, we had faculty coming into the college, volunteering their time to, we had Michael Delaney, who retired, but he keeps coming back. He came in to help us advise students. So we got 33 students fully, full schedules for the fall.
Fantastic.
We got about 11 or 12 summer classes assigned or, what is it, registered during that event. We had food, we had it in the hallways, and then we were able to bring students over to the open studios. And then at open studios, we were able to recruit them back over to our event. We had a little bit of leftover food and thank you to our deans and students office that actually helped me get the food for that. And so then we brought our food over and waters and things to the open studios event. They had, as we talk of our SUNY Erie 100, we had a former student come back and talk to our students. He was just fantastic. He, what was his name? Matt O'Hara. So he did actually an exploration on neoliberal dictatorship, right? And it was fantastic. And we had a ton of students there, probably like 25 students. You know, faculty came down as well because it was just such a really fantastic talk. And then we had an open forum with student voices where our students talked about their positive experience at SUNY Erie, but also, you know, their fears for moving forward for the fall semester. And we actually have everything recorded. And if you want an opportunity to hear from the students directly from this forum, I can send Kelly, you know, the video. We have, you know, it's our communication arts students, you know, took the video and made it part of like a class project and, you know, they have podcasts and things like that. So we really try to include as many different departments into this event and then coordinate our registration event along with it.
Please send that. I think we'd benefit by that. Marketing committee could think of, it's almost a little study group.
Yeah, definitely, for sure. We have a student event coming up.
Send it to the SGA too.
SGA was there. They were there. They helped us. And actually, speaking of SGA, one of our students, what's her name? Nope, not Molly, Iman. She did a full student organization, because Ramadan is finishing up this weekend. So we're having a celebration of Arabic heritage, actually, on May 5th, which is a Thursday. So yesterday, our registration event was on a Wednesday, so we're going to do a registration event as well on that Thursday to also do that and work in tandem with the student event that is, you know, going to be celebrating Arab heritage. We, they have four or five guest speakers that are coming in, some of them are former students as well. Food, dancing, so I'm excited about that. I'm going to go down and check that out. So, and then South Campus, we're going to do another one on May 10th. And it's really, it's a full faculty initiative to get our students registered, because as we know, if we have them in the door now, the easiest way to keep them is to register them now while we have them. And so my class is all registered. The ones that attended that did not register are, you know, we, of course, like, so now why aren't you registering? You know, they're transferring or they're graduating. You know, we did have a student who said, you know, I am transferring, but I think, I haven't gotten the letter yet. I'm like, you know, well, let's get you registered because we can have a backup plan in case, you know, it doesn't come through or whatever. So we had a lot of those conversations. We had our counselors come in, we had a lot of our junior faculty from other departments. And our physical, education, sports, and leisure program and health and wellness across the three campuses had a similar event also yesterday, and they had pizza. So really, you could get like a buffet around South Campus. So our students were very well-fed yesterday and our health and wellness team were able to register 25 students with full schedules across the three campuses for the fall. So that's been our large focus right now. We are kind of present in all these different areas. There's the Strategic Enrollment Management Task Force, I'm a member of that as well as a few others. And so that we're part of the conversations with enrollment trends and things moving forward. Budgetary, we had a win that we didn't, we participate in SUNY OER. And I know I've presented before with our OER, Open Educational Resources, so they're free to our students. And if faculty participated in the SUNY OER, it was also free. So one of our, he's on our Senate Executive, Dave Yuzinski, he's our main numbers man, even though I'm also math, but Dave just does it like nothing. So he is on the SUNY-wide OER Committee, and they were talking about charging students now. Okay, now we have to house it, all these different things, we're going to start charging and you guys figure out how you're going to do it. Are you going to do a fee or whatever? And so Dave came back and we kind of talked and I said, well, you know what, there's other things out there that I could do. And someone else, I could do this too, I could do this. And SUNY Erie was the largest adopter across the SUNY, all the SUNY campuses of the OER. So we went back with, well, then we'll just leave. We're the largest adopter. And they took away the fees. They're like, we're not going to charge anybody then. So that was a huge win, that was kind of one of the things we were doing on the side. Dave Yuzinski, he's the man as far as that stuff goes. And I alluded to it a little bit earlier, but Brightspace is going to be our new for, whatever it is, distance learning mechanism.
Platform.
Platform, thank you. So we're working with Pat Ryan, who's the Director of Distance Learning. And it's convenient for me, he's at South Campus, which is where I am, so I could just pop down there. We're starting the training coming up in the next couple of weeks for our pilot faculty. Five of our Senate Executive members are also part of the pilot as well as many other people across the divisions. We have all of our rock stars, our SUNY Erie Plus teachers that have gotten that badge, so they're all in. And then we're going to be fully moving the college forward for the fall, we'll be ready to go. And we meet again on May 10th, so I'll only be at the registration event for a few hours because I'll have to pop up here to North for Senate. But we got a list of things we're going to be working on for that meeting. Kate, you'll be excited. We're moving forward the grade change policy and the grades in academic standing grading system policy. We ironed it out. They will be coming to the Senate for a vote on May 10th, so I believe that'll give us enough time to send that forward for the June Policy Committee meeting. And then we'll be establishing our, all the different things we're going to try to work for over the summer to make sure we're all successful and have everything, all our ducks in a row for our students.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks for that, thanks for your earlier comments too.
If you don't mind, Jeff, you know, I'd like to give Scott Ermer a chance, if you have anything you want to add to, you know, my high-level, you know?
It's all preliminary right now. I mean, we're meeting with SUNY and High Tech and probably that next meeting we'll have more information and present something more.
But to that, to that point, and Scott, thank you. I know, we do know that you're wrestling with a big alligator here, figuring this out. And it's a terrible challenge to try to contend with two systems at once in transition. And we'll just look for ways to support you as best we can. We appreciate what we know you're doing. And that goes for everyone around, ringing the room here, helping us with the meeting, all you guys who come, all key college leaders in various departments. Having you here at this meeting for me and for all of us is very helpful because we can look over and ask you something or hear something from you, or you can hear what we're saying and maybe correct us or supplement. It's a good dynamic and I would just encourage everyone, when you're flipping a coin, should I, should I not go to the meeting? If you can, I know they're long and sometimes you can go a long time without saying anything and we get to, you know, talk all the time up here, but really glad to have everyone here today.
Yeah, and to that point, I don't know if everyone knows Mark Pacholak.
Yeah.
But Mark, maybe you could introduce yourself a little bit. Mark is our Safety and Security Lead and frankly, he knows everybody in this space and, you know, has been kind of a blessing as we're looking at different challenges. He's fully apprised of anything and everything that's going on. So, you know, something happens at McKinley High School and, you know, I know before the county executive.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
It's just amazing, but.
For those of you who don't know me, Mark Pacholak, the Chief of Campus Safety, been in that position for about a year and a half, was the number two in the department before then. Prior to here, I was the Chief of Police for Orchard Park, was the co-chair for counterterrorism for this half of the state. I've sat on the Stadium Review Committee for about 12 years, so I'm still involved peripherally with that. I served 26 years in the Marines, I've been on five continents. In regards to what Dr. Balkan said, I was the Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees for Central Police Services. I work closely with all the commissioners, whether it be Gil Burstein, Danny Membrith, Greg Butcher, Bill Geary. So, you know, anytime that I hear, for example, that there's a shooting and I'm talking to Commissioner Grimalia, I'm either talking to Dave or before Bill and letting them know, hey, here's what we can expect to happen.
Terrific, yeah. Greg Butcher from Grand Island, a friend of mine, say hello to him.
I talked to Greg for about an hour this morning.
Did you? Okay, good.
Thanks.
You bet.
Thanks, Mark.
Anyone else here to chip in anything before we're close to concluding? Any old business or new business? I know we covered a lot of both during this meeting. I don't think there's any reason for an executive session today, so I think we're going to skip that. And our next meeting is May 26th at 9:00, St.
that, and our next meeting is May 26th at nine, same place, in person. So thanks, everyone, for attending, I'll take a motion, oh, yeah, Mark.
Trustee, so, just so you're aware, on the 26th is when we have a live-in history event here at North Campus.
Oh.
There will be 800 high school students here, along with reenactors, so you will hear the occasional cannon and musket charge.
Oh, cool.
So I just want you to be prepared. What's that?
Enacting what?
The reenactors from the Revolutionary War.
Cool.
Revolution, okay.
So that's why, that's why they're calling it a living history, so I just want you to be aware, you'll see people running by with muskets, it's not a bad dream.
We have a five-continent Marine.
My son attended, I just filled out the field form this morning.
Just a last, before I close, graduation, who has the best grip on that, when it is, where it is, and what the trustees are doing?
I've got to get my, I've got to sign up for that duty.
Yeah, fill out your thing.
Well, I guess that would be me.
Steps to the microphone.
As co-chair of graduation, graduation is May 25th, so the day right before the board meeting, and the muskets going off on the campus the next day. Ceremony starts at 7:00, we're asking people to get there about 6:00. All trustees will be up on the stage, walk with the stage party, and you'll be handing out diploma covers, and we're going to figure out exactly what else from there. I believe everyone turned in their robing forms, if you haven't, we'll talk to Kelly and make sure we get it, but any other questions?
No, thanks for just, it's, I know it's on all of our calendars and we filled out things, but just a little reminder, and Candace being new to the board, that was, I came in in late April, so I went straight to a graduation like you're going to, and it was just so gratifying to see and participate in that. If you can at all be there, try to be there, you're, you're going to come away a bit changed in a positive way. It's a, it's a big night, and we haven't had it in the last two years, of course, with handout, so, I mean, it's taken place, but we haven't had it, the trustees involved, live, it's all been virtual, so.
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. All right, that's all the business I have, anyone else want to bring something forward? If not, a motion to adjourn? Len, and a second?
Move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
We're done.
All right. We're done at 12:37, long meeting, but we got a lot of time.